Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education for February 10th, 2020. This is a, as I said, a special meeting is going to be relatively short. We only have one item. You'll note that Mrs. Frank is not with us this evening. She has a sick child and hopefully Addison you get, you get better real quick.
Yes.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. Mrs. Bonfield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford here. Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonfield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We do have a quorum. We'll go to audience communication. Anyone who wants to address the board, there are blue slips outside the, the door to the right. I do not see anybody in the audience and I do not have any blue slips. So we'll move on to item three, approval for board members to attend M A S B Winter Institute Conference. May I have a motion please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that board trustees attend the M A S B Winter Institute 2020 in Lansing, Michigan on Friday, February 21st for a total cost of $450 as follows. Cultural agility for district leaders, three at $90, Colleen Burton, Crystal Frank, and Mark Johnson. Creating school policy with a trauma-sensitive approach, two at $90, Colleen Burton and Mark Johnson.
Support?
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And, uh, let's see. Mrs. Oakwist, do you want to address this or is there really anything to address?
Yes. Well, we are so appreciative of the time that our board will spend in just a couple of weekends on their own professional development. As you know, our board is proud to be an honor board and you've earned that distinction by continued professional development in which you engage, especially through our state organization, M A S B. So with approval at this meeting, we'll be able to register you for those courses and we appreciate your time in attending.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Any other questions or comments? And I have to apologize, I did not have my mic on. No other questions, no other comments?
No.
All right, then we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Bonfield, would you take the role please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, and the motion carries. And since that is the only item we had on the agenda, then we will be adjourned unless there's any other business to come before this particular special meeting. If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for February 10th, 2020. For those of you who are tuning in to watch more discussion on our items, this is the meeting that you want to tune into. You will not hear as much discussion on the items that we will hear tonight as you will during our voting meeting because this is where you'll, you'll hear most of the information. The items that have come before the Committee of the Whole have probably been brought before the Board on at least one occasion beforehand. So we have a basic understanding of what the items are, but tonight is the meeting where we really delve into the issues and get into the questions. For those of you who are in the audience and want to follow along, it looks like we have agendas sitting here on the table. There are also blue slips outside of the door and to the right for audience communication if you want to fill one of those out and you can present it at audience communication. If you're following at home and you want to follow our agenda, you can go to the, our website, livonypublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab and then you will see a little bit to the right, it says Board Information. And if you click on that down on the left, about halfway down the page, you'll see meeting agendas and you can click on there and follow along. So we'll get into our agenda and first item is Audience Communication, item one. I do not have any blue slips and there's no one rushing to the podium with a blue slip. So we'll move on to item two, our Committee of the Whole. We have one item under that. Item A is Board Officer Assignments. I had an opportunity to at least have communication with most of my colleagues and we have decided everyone feels pretty comfortable with the committee assignments that they have right now. So we aren't going to make any changes for that this year. I've also spoken with Ms. Frank, who is not here tonight. As I indicated earlier, she has a, a sick child, so I'm sure we'll get through the meeting with, without her, but it's always better when she is here. So we'll just keep the assignments the same and I'll just have Ms. Wozniak reissue our sheet. So, Mrs. Burton?
Just as a clarification for those who may be looking on the agenda, I just noticed it myself. It says Board Officer Assignments. It, it really should read Committee Assignments. We voted on our officers last week.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Or a couple of weeks ago.
I, I, I thought that had been changed, but apparently they haven't.
I didn't even notice it till just now, but...
I think maybe the...
The agenda is for the board meetings.
Yeah, for the, I think for the agenda, I had spoken with, with Ms. Wozniak and I think the, the board book came out before I talked to her, so...
Got it, okay.
Thank you for that clarification though. So we'll go on to item three, our Finance Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bonfield.
Thank you. We have one item on the Finance Committee this week and that's the Wayne County Enhancement Millage Renewal. And I believe Mrs. Oakwist is going to start us out and Mrs. Smith will have a very nice presentation for us.
Thank you. We should see this heading up on the screen shortly. We are going to review actually, thank you.
Tap. We're going to review very similarly the presentation we shared with you last week. As you know, and we'll actually go to the second slide. Are we going to pull that up?
We're waiting for it to be pulled up.
Alrighty. We shared with you to start a proposed timeline for our discussions of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. We wanted to have ample time for you as a board to hear this information as well as for our community as well. So we had quite a lengthy discussion about this last week and we will once again this evening. So just as a reminder, we'll, we covered the presentation last week at our study session. We'll cover it again tonight at our Committee of the Whole. Then on our March 2nd study session, what we'll do is we'll take any questions that we've had from the Board up until that time, make sure that we incorporate it in our discussion. And then on the 16th, at our Committee of the Whole, we will review a draft resolution for the Board of Education to consider with regard to the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. And then finally, we'd bring it forward to the regular Board meeting on March 23rd. There's the timeline. So we're going to take a few minutes and take a look back. And just a reminder, and if you want to, maybe we'll all look toward that screen. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So as we, as a, as a reminder, as we look back, on the November 2016 ballot, we had a question for the voters of Wayne County asking for two mills to be lobbied over a six-year period of time. That millage will expire in December, the end of December 2021. At the time, that levy generated about $360 per student for every student in Wayne County, in each of our 33 districts. That passed countywide in 2016. So just a quick look back on the next slide to what is a regional enhancement millage. And again, I know you're familiar with this and we've gone through this a few times together. But when Prop A came about in 1994, it really changed the way schools were funded. And just local districts no longer had the option of going for what was called a local school millage. The only exception to that is that the law allows for an ISD or an intermediate school district to go for an education enhancement millage, but it is a countywide millage. It's not a local millage. And so in order to do that, the, what they call constituent school districts, so all the school districts in that ISD are asked to determine whether or not they support that proposal going in front of voters. And you have to have a number of school districts that represent at least 50% of the students in the county. And so that may not be 50% of the districts. It depends obviously on the size of that district and how many students they represent. And then it's proposed on a countywide basis if enough school district boards ask Wayne County RISA Board to put it on the ballot. So we'll spend just a couple of minutes on what is a regional enhancement millage. Again, we talked about how many, how many boards have to approve putting it on the ballot. And just a reminder that that ballot question passes or fails total as a countywide. So your district may pass it, but if it doesn't pass countywide, then none of those dollars would be collected or distributed. Conversely, if your community does not pass it, but it passes countywide, it is assessed across the county and all districts would receive those, that funding. So in, now, there was a law that was passed about a year and a half ago that amended the enhancement millage to also include the public school academies or charter schools within the district. So for Wayne County, that would include about 110 public school academies or charter schools. And that does impact the amount of money on a per pupil basis that each school district would get. We'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of that as we go on. And then the last piece, the last bullet there, each local district has control over how those dollars are spent as long as they fall within the guidelines of how general fund dollars in a district can be spent. So the needs vary from district to district depending on their financial status, whether or not they have a sinking fund to take care of operational issues, et cetera. So do you want to spend a minute just talking about why school districts chose to put this in front of voters in 2016?
And just to build on to what Andrea shared, if all the school boards vote to have this move forward, it still would go to the ballot for actual passage. So even if all the school boards were on board with it moving forward, again, it would then mean it was going to the community so we could hear the community's voice on if they'd like to see this pass. So why did school districts request to put this proposal on the Wayne County, to the Wayne County voters in 2016? First off, Wayne County districts each have the goal of providing the kind of education that will enable their students to be successful and believes in this investment will help to do that. Also, from 2011 to 2015, school operating funds for districts in Wayne County dropped $485 million. So a very significant drop in revenue available to support our mission. Despite various budget stabilizing measures, including reducing or freezing salaries, benefits, administration, administrative costs, and implementing other cost savings measures, most districts continue to feel challenged in their ability to provide core educational programs. And I know we've definitely felt that in Livonia. We've had to make some modifications to the program offerings and the staff we have in place as a result of the cut in funding. A statewide school funding adequacy study concluded that added investment into local school districts is necessary to prepare students for success after school. And on the next slide, we'll jump into what that specific research was. And lastly, Wayne County school systems want to solve this funding gap and increase educational opportunities for their students. So, you know, we continue to work with our legislators to advocate, advocate for adequate school funding. But in the meantime, we want to be responsible for the students in front of us and give them the best education possible. And we think supporting the regional enhancement millage is a way to do that. So as I mentioned, some additional research has been concluded since the passage of the 2016 millage. Two pretty significant studies. The first is the Michigan 2018 adequacy study. The first is the Michigan 2018 Adequacy Study. That was organized by the Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative. It was designed to inform policy solutions to school funding problems like those Michigan Conference. It was conducted by two of the most experienced and nationally prominent consulting firms. Researchers used both professional judgment and evidence-based models. The first study to incorporate charter schools here in Michigan. And it also drew on the input of 300 Michigan representatives, so a mix of representatives from school districts. I know business leaders were included too, so a nice cross-section of people from across the state. And if anybody would like to hear more about that, they do have a very nice website with some brief videos that you can watch, as well as the full report, which is over 300 pages. It does a nice job of including who were those 300 people that were included, what was the methodology used to conduct the study, and then what their final recommendation is. And on this next slide, I have what the actual recommendations were, are in terms of financial implications. So at a base cost, they suggest minimally $9,590 per pupil. So to give you a reference, our current foundation allowance this year is $8,529. So just on that line alone, if the state were to fund the recommended $9,500, that would be just under $15 million of additional revenue annually to our school district. So, pretty sizable. Just imagining what would be possible with that additional funding is pretty amazing. They propose a formula or some funding based on size. Also, another big impact to LaVonia would be this poverty weight of 35% of the base for economically disadvantaged or at-risk students. What that would mean for LaVonia would be an additional, over $12 million of funding to support our at-risk learners. Another big area that was targeted in this study is the education for our English language learners. And there would be different weights. The WIDA is a test that they take to determine their level of English proficiency. And so based on where they test on that or the results of that test, there would be a different weight given to those students. For LaVonia, right now, from the state, we receive just under $40,000 of Section 41 funding for our EL learners. We also have a few federal grants, but if the state were to fund this recommendation, that would be $2.7 million additional revenue for our EL learners. Next up was Special Education. And right now, so there would be additional weights depending on the category that our special ed students fall into. We're very fortunate that we have a county millage for special education, so a few of our programs are fully funded between the county and what we receive from the state. But we also have some other items, too, that aren't fully funded. So this would definitely be an opportunity for us to maybe shift some costs around, to have the state being able to pick up additional costs, would allow us some additional resources that we don't have in place right now for our special education population. One other item I did want to make note of that I'm still working on is for the preschool. The recommendation is $14,155 per pupil. And I need to do a little more research to find out exactly what of our preschool population that would cover. Right now, the school district does offer a fee-based preschool program, so what this potentially could mean would be a free option for our community, which would be very exciting. Moving on, there was also a second study completed. That first one was completed in 2018 and this one came out in January of 2019 by Michigan State University. And it's, the title is Michigan School Finance at the Crossroads: A Quarter Century of State Control. And it was written by Dr. David Arson, Tanner Delfer, and Jesse Nagel. And it had substantial overlap with the Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative recommendations. And one thing that stood out to me in their summary report, which is also available out on their website, if you'd like to read that, again, that was a very nicely-written report, again, explaining the different, you know, how the research was conducted and as well as the recommendations. But one of the quotes that stood out to me in that report was this, although the state controls most operating revenue available to Michigan public schools, it is never calibrated funding levels to the resources needed for students to meet outcome standards, even as the federal No Child Left Behind Act and the Michigan Merit Curriculum dramatically increased achievement expectations. So that's really interesting to think back to 1994, when our, the way that we funded schools changed and to think when that was determined, what the foundation allowance was and what the target was, that there wasn't research done at the time to determine what school districts actually need per pupil to fund the programs. So, one thing to, just to mention, that when that foundation allowance was determined, again, back in 1994, what wasn't accounted for was the capital needs of school districts. So that's why you see school districts going before their communities, asking for sinking fund mills or also for bond projects, something to be, those are ways for us to fund our capital needs across the districts, our infrastructure, without having to take money out of the classroom and out of our general fund to do so. This next is just a chart that was included in that report that really stood out to a number of us. We've seen this before, but it's interesting. It shows the inflation-adjusted total K-12 education revenue as a percentage of 1995 revenue for all 50 states. And the red line is the state of Michigan. So you can see that we are ranked the lowest and it's by a pretty sizable margin compared to the other 49 states. So we definitely have some work to do.
Alrighty, so let's take a look ahead. We looked back to say, why did we go out for the 2016 enhancement millage? And now we're really looking ahead and saying, you know, do we ask vote, do we put this question before voters to consider renewal of the education enhancement millage? And so really, these are some of the broad considerations that we'd like to take a look at over the next month or so. And the first one really is, what impact has the Wayne County Education Enhancement Millage had on LPS? What impact has it had on the children across our county? We know that each district would lose significant revenue, which would really require, if not that first year, certainly over the next few years, commensurate adjustments to our expenditures. So we certainly couldn't continue to go on. And we'll have a slide, as you recall, at the very end that shows if we did, how that would impact our fund balance and how that would impact our operating revenue as we move forward. So in here, we share with you that the LPS revenue would be reduced by approximately $4.8 million. And one of your questions may be, well, that seems lower than what we're currently collecting. And so we'll hark back to a couple of slides ago when we talked about the legislation that now includes the PSAs in charter schools as part of the per pupil expenditures and funding for this. So our collection, once those schools are factored in upon renewal, would be about $4.8 million a year. That's if everything remained the same, meaning the number of pupils across Wayne County remained the same and the taxable value of the homes across Wayne County. So each of those may adjust up or down a bit, but for the most part, we know that our revenue would be reduced by almost $5 million annually if this millage were not to be renewed. So again, we mentioned that public school academies are now eligible. They would receive the same amount per pupil as any other constituent district in the county. Finally, really the other question that we had to take a look at was, when should this go on the ballot? It doesn't expire until December of 2021. And so some folks have said, alright, so maybe November of 2021. Well, there was legislation passed that said that it is for Wayne County only, that you may go in November of 2020 or November of 2022. No options for May or August elections, no option for 2021. So it really, the question was, do we go out a bit early? Now, we wouldn't start levying those dollars until it was expired, so that it doesn't impact the taxpayer that way. But if we waited to not renew until 2022, the millage will expire in December of 2021 and we would do our planning for budget year 2022, 2023, that's a mouthful, without knowing if that revenue is coming in. And so districts across the county would have to obviously make responsible decisions fiscally and would have to plan for potentially that money not being there, that funding source not being there, which may interrupt the service that we're providing to students that you'll hear about in just a few minutes. So the decision was made that really November 2020, even though it's on the early end of it, is really the most responsible option. So are there any questions about just in general, those broad considerations, before we really delve into what has LPS done with that funding and how have we served our students and our schools?
Mrs. Burton? Yes. Mrs. Oakwood, so bottom line at this point, for those of us, or for those who are viewing our meeting.
Sure.
This would be no increase to our taxpayers, but it would bring in approximately $4.8 million to our school district, which is close to what it had been, a little bit less, but close to what it has been over the past three to four years.
That's correct.
And that would continue for a five-year period?
It's a six-year.
A six-year period.
A six-year renewal. So all of the basic elements of the millage would remain the same. It's a two-mill levy. It's a six-year period. So there would be no tax increase to voters at all.
Okay, thank you.
Just to build on that, viewers at home might wonder, how can the revenue be approximately what we've collected if we're adding in more schools? And the reason for that is that since the passage of the enhancement millage back in 2016, we've seen a rise in property tax values. And unlike some other levies, this is not subject to a headly rollback. So when the taxable values do go up, that's additional revenue to the school districts.
So as you know, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
As you continue, are you going to be sharing with the board and with our viewers what we have been doing with that money?
Absolutely.
Okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, that's a perfect segue. So really, we had an opportunity now to take a look at what were, what are the greatest needs that exist in our schools and across our district? And where did we want to first begin to take a look at setting priorities for the use of these funds? And so really, these were the five, the next, on the next slide, these are the five areas that we started with when we first went out and talked to voters. We have remained steadfast with our expenditures matching these priorities and that's what we'll highlight for you this evening. So the first was really hiring and retaining high-quality staff. We know that's a significant element to determine the success for our students and what happens in our classrooms. The next three really focus specifically toward our students. Over the years, the district was really put in the position to have to look at cutting programs or certainly not adding to. So we wanted the opportunity to not only preserve the programs we currently have in place, but to look at what additional opportunities could we provide for students. The third one has been a significant area of focus, as you know, maintaining class size and reducing it where feasible. Mrs. Scott is going to give us a math lesson in just a little bit and tell us how we're doing on that. And then this fourth bullet has been a huge focus as well, supporting struggling learners and students with added needs, which really ultimately services all students when we're able to do that. And then the fifth one was financial stability. So what could our district, being financially stable, moving out of an early warning status, growing our fund balance, while also enhancing our programs and opportunities for students? And so we will start with the first bullet, which focuses on hiring and retaining quality staff. And who better than to have our friends from HR here to talk to us about that?
Good evening.
Hello.
Mr. McDonald, I will quickly go through these bullet points for you, but the first... See how quick we were? The first is the successive multi-year agreements with all six of our bargaining groups. Bargaining groups? You'll remember, we had a two-year agreement in the spring of 2017. And then this past spring, we had three-year agreements and again, with all six of our bargaining groups. The agreements provide for salary increases for staff over a five-year consecutive period. Now, this is on the heels of roughly a decade of concessions that included wage freezes, wage cuts, step freezes, furlough days, restructured salary schedules, significant staff reductions, and a combination, again, over a pretty intense decade that we went through. And also, we have efforts to mitigate the impact of the rising premium costs for health insurance. The district, as you know, is now funding health insurance at the maximum allowed under Michigan law, which we refer to as the hard cap. And we continue to provide multiple health insurance plans, while they are essentially the same quality health insurance regardless which plan you're on. The funding structure, based on deductibles, coinsurance, prescription plans, and so forth, is, varies from plan to plan. The health insurance premiums have increased dramatically over the same period that our employee wages have remained stagnant. And so when you look at those first three bullets, they represent stability, competitive wage, and affordable health insurance, which are three very key factors to attracting, to hiring, and to retaining quality employees.
When it comes to attracting quality employees, as you all know, we have a teacher shortage in the state of Michigan, really across the nation. And Mrs. Jenkins and I have been doing some interviews with some of our newer staff. And one of our staff members said, and another confirmed, we're considered a destination district. People want to come here and work, but that does not minimize the challenges we have when attracting new employees. And one of the things we've been able to do is recognize some experience when some of our new teachers come in. In the past, we weren't necessarily able to do that. We had to start them off lower on the scale for budgetary reasons primarily. And now we're able to recognize that experience, which ends up being a benefit to our students or staff. We're able to bring in someone with some outside experience, some different perspectives in a given area, especially in some specialty areas. And that really has tremendously been helpful for us. And then the next two bullets, I don't want to steal the thunder of my colleagues, who will be coming up after me, but I'll give you a little sneak preview of what they're going to talk about. Ms. O'Brien's going to talk about some of the, I'm going to start, sorry, with Mrs. Scott. And Mr. Willenburg are going to talk about some of the direct student supports that we've been able to provide our students. What we mean by this is, what have we been able to do in the classrooms? What changes have we been able to make, whether it's class size, whether it's offering certain classes to help a struggling learner? And both of them will kind of get a little bit more in-depth and into the weeds on that with you. And then Mrs. O'Brien will come up and she will talk about some of the investments we've made with our staff regarding some of the professional development. We've had some great opportunities. I know she'll mention Jimmy Costas, which has been just a tremendous learning experience for all of us here. And she will elaborate a little bit more on some of those opportunities for you in the very near future.
So we'll transition now and talk a little bit about those next three bullets, which really focus on our students, our schools, our staff, and how we can best support the great work going on in each of our classrooms. So we will start with Mrs. Scott. As she comes up to the microphone, just a reminder that when we embarked on this, what we said was, boy, putting things in place for six years was a hefty commitment. So what we said was, we're going to put things in place for three years, we're going to set success criteria, and then collect data over those three years. And really, this is, it's this spring where we're going to be taking a look at that and recommending to the board, do we continue with each of these enhancements that we've put into place? What impact are they making? What adjustments do we want to make? And do we want them to continue? And so we've really looked at this as a first three-year chunk and then a second three-year chunk, because as you know, the enhancement millage is over six years. So in the center slide, the center of the slide there, you see some of the data points that we'll be taking a look at as we determine if our success criteria has been met. So now we'll take a look at elementary-level enhancements and the impact they've had.
Okay, thank you. So this very first slide, I'm going to begin reviewing the enhancements at the elementary level. And you'll notice a direct connection to the priorities and a common theme across all the additional allocations. That theme kind of exudes increased opportunities for students to thrive. So on this very first slide, we have the enhancement of an allocation for schools and teacher stipends for before and after-school learning interventions. Has the impact of increased opportunities for students to receive targeted intervention and frequent progress monitoring. Students, parents, and staff are supported, and you're going to see that theme across the board, too. The next one was the enhancement of paraprofessional... The next one was the enhancement of paraprofessional kindergarten support. That's 8.5 full days in the fall. That covers the first two weeks of the school year for each kindergarten classroom to have a parapro all day. And an additional 30 days per kindergarten teacher to be able to be used throughout the rest of the school year. This has the impact of increased academic and social-emotional support for our at-risk students as well as our very youngest learners coming into our schools. Increased number of students receiving targeted intervention and frequent monitoring to assess their progress. And again, the support for students, parents, and staff. On the next slide... Next, we have the next slide? Is it up there? Oh, I'm sorry. Too many computers. So the next slide shows the enhancement of 8.5 positions for EST and ESAP added over the past three years. 7.5 of those are for the EST, for the K-4, which is an elementary support teacher. They support academic, social, and emotional needs. And then we also have added 1.0 additional ESAP for the 5-6 level. And that's an elementary student assistance program provider. And they support social and emotional needs for our tweens. This has the impact of increased academic and social-emotional support for our students, increased number of students receiving targeted intervention, and again, monitoring of their progress. And once more, our students, parents, and staff are supported. Our K-4 schools range from 1.4 to 2.0 ESTs. We determine additional allocations for each one of the schools, determine at-risk criteria for like free and reduced count, the total number of students in the enrollment, and of course, academic data. Staff have, this is one of these areas that I'll just use some words, and we're going to dig into this just a little bit deeper later. But staff have described this additional EST support with words such as amazing, consistent, invaluable, fidelity, building relationships, and it goes on and on and on. So again, we're going to touch on that again a little bit later. On the next slide, the enhancement of additional staffing allocation for flexibility in the special schedule for the intervention block implementation. This has the impact of increased number of students receiving targeted intervention and again, monitoring of their progress. Because that ability to have that intervention block gives a consistent time when students can have their interventions on a specific skill. And they can depend on that to happen. Now, the enhancement of, which is always very exciting, additional FTEs to maintain current class size and then lower where possible. It also helps us with making sure that we try to reduce the number of combination classrooms. So we're going to spend a little bit more time on this enhancement. We use staffing ratios to begin the determination of the number of classes needed for the students in each grade level. Our staffing ratios are shown in the blue on the right side of the slide. So for example, kindergarten, we have a hard cap of 26, so we don't go above 26 in each one of our kindergarten classrooms. In grades one through three, we use the ratio of 27.5 to one teacher. Grades four, 28.75. And grades five and six, 29.5 to one teacher. So we're going to give you a little bit of an example, but I don't have the board to show it to you as we did last week. If there are 85 students at a school in first grade, we would divide 85 by 27.5. So this would show, anyone can do that quickly in their heads. This would show that we need three first-grade teachers. There would be 28, 28, and 29 in those classes. So we know that that's, we are not comfortable with that number of students in there. So we try to then, with an additional allocation, we would add one more teacher, which would be four first-grade classrooms in this case. And the class sizes would then be 21, 21, 21, and 22. So this is a significant difference from 28 to 21 and 22. On the slide, you can see that in the 2016-17 school year, we would have allocated 221 teachers using only the staffing ratio. But that year, we added eight teachers to reduce high pockets of students and reduce the number of combination classrooms. In 2017-18, we added 16 additional classrooms to lower class sizes in more grades and more schools. In 2018-19, we added 18 additional classrooms. And this school year, in 2019-20, we added 33 additional classrooms to the original staffing allocation. So on the next slide, we're going to further demonstrate the impact of adding additional teachers in every school. This slide shows that the average number of students at each grade level across Livonia Public Schools. So for example, and if you look at the second grade line there, the staffing ratio is 27.5 to one teacher. By allocating additional staff in second grade across our district, the average number of students in our second-grade classrooms is about 21 students. On the right side of this slide is an actual example that I explained on an earlier slide, the first grade at Grant Elementary, showing the impact of adding an additional teacher. Moving again, class sizes went from 28 and 29 to 21 and 22. That second example is with an upper elementary that would have been 29 and 30 students in each classroom by using the staffing ratio. But by adding an additional teacher, the class sizes were reduced to 26 and 27. So each of our schools have had the benefit of lower class size, at least in some of the grades, where it was feasible and it made sense to be able to do that. Would you like to enjoy doing that last one?
So what we did was, Mrs. Scott has just gathered some feedback, because, you know, what's interesting for us is we were at Roosevelt last week. We thought some of the things that were impactful was when the teachers who had joined us talked a little bit about what some of those enhancements have been and how it's impacted them. And they only shared just a few brief things, but I think that was impactful for our board. And so what we'll do is, are you able to, no offense, is everyone able to read it from where you are? Why don't you read through, these are just a few of literally dozens of pieces of feedback that principals have shared from their teachers directly. And this is about the impact of lower class size. So I'll let you read through these, and then we'll talk about them for a moment. I don't know if there are a couple of things that you want to mention that jump out at you? Certainly, you know, the idea, I think, of the individualized attention, the ability to meet the needs of children and truly know them, to form those relationships, but then be able to meet their social, emotional, and academic needs, and that teachers are seeing the results of that.
And I think it shows also that the parents are seeing the results of that, too.
A number of people, didn't they miss, a number of people mentioned that parents have commented to them that there's, that they feel a difference as well.
So when I first came on the board, and up to a few years ago, we would hear often from parents that felt like class sizes were always growing and that that was a big concern. And we've noticed the last few years that, you know, we haven't heard that. In fact, we've heard more positive feedback. So clearly, it's making a difference. You know, I think it's something we all worried about, but the staff has done an awesome job of working to reduce these. And I think it is truly appreciated by parents in the community and students themselves. So, you know, thanks for your hard work on this.
And we are hoping to be able to continue that trend. So as you know, that with every average, there are pockets that still remain high, and we want to be able to continue to get to those. But overwhelmingly, there has been an impact at each of our schools and at many, many of our grades. And then the second slide talks a little bit about the impact of having additional, the EST, the elementary support teacher. And some schools have chosen to say, okay, one elementary support teacher is going to focus on social-emotional needs. The other one is going to focus on academic. Other schools have chosen to have both focused on each of those areas. But I'll, I'll ask you to just take a minute to read through some of the feedback teachers have given on that additional support. So we'll share with you in your packet this week some additional feedback. But we want to be able to share this with you as well as with our community, because this comes directly from our staff as they weigh in. Certainly, we have the hard data, so to speak, that we're collecting. But it's a great opportunity for us to hear the voices of our teachers and how this is impacting our students directly. Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott, before you go, whichever one of you would like to answer this, as a board, we are more familiar with it. But for the benefit of our public, can you give us some examples of what types of situations or issues our ESTs or our elementary support teachers are dealing with in order for our children to flourish academically?
Absolutely.
Well, we have the academic support, of course. So like Superintendent Oakus had said, that in this particular scenario, they decided to put one EST as focusing on academic support. So that's where they end up, you know, pulling their groups and making sure that they're based on skills and what it is that the students need academically to succeed. And then on the social-emotional, we know that we have students who are, have come from trauma, have experienced trauma. And so they absolutely need support. Some have some behavioral challenges that need to be able to learn what it's like to be a student and to be able to, how to build friendships. Anything that to do with the social and emotional part of a child, so that we're addressing the whole child, not just the academic needs.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Willenborg is going to join us and talk about the secondary enhancements now.
Good evening.
Hello.
And let me emphatically state that the enhancement millage has been an exciting and valuable boon to our planning and operations at the secondary level. It's allowed us to lengthen our stride and extend our reach into a lot of critical areas. So we have put on our educational engineering hard hats and have directed our enhancement funds into direct student supports and balancing. And what you have there in the slide, let me touch back on what Mr. McDonald was saying about what these things are. Direct student supports refers to specific building-based initiatives. So all the buildings have certain ideas and plans and focuses. Allows them to focus on their struggling learners. Balancing is, allows for a fit and allows us to harmonize the idea of what we offer with available or unavailable staff, instructional staff, and mix that with class size considerations. That's balancing, if you will. So what you have on the slide is through the last four years, essentially, what we've been able to add, you know, at the secondary level. You know, in direct student supports, those building-based initiatives, and in balancing. And this year, we have an additional 12.8 FTEs, you know, because of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. It's a huge boost for our ability to run an exciting program. The next slide will help us see exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about direct student supports. And again, these building-based programs. So we can talk about middle school academic support classes or transition classes at the high school, at Holmes, at Franklin High School. And some of these programs are not every school, like I said, but I'll try to, and this isn't an all-encompassing list. But let me just highlight some of these things. You know, at Franklin High School, transition classes. At Holmes, the academic support classes, these are classes that help students in their planning and their organization. It helps them learn how to study, how to ask for help. You know, and the goal in all those classes, transition classes, are to ease their transition into that level and to make sure that they're passing their classes. And our impact, we do show higher passing rates in all their core courses and a growth in their school success maturity. They're maturing or helping them see the light. Another example would be Math Lab. Math Lab, Math Skills Class, pre-algebra courses. And this might be an example at Church of High School, where they have drop-in help sessions during lunch. Or the pre-algebra identified students, students who might need some extra skill building before they hit Algebra I. Over 200 students drop in at lunch over the semester in those Math Lab classes. At Stevenson High School, they'll hand-pick, you know, analyze student success thus far and hand-pick students for their, for some of their classes, which has resulted in, as they've moved on, zero failures in their effort there. It does lead to a higher passing rate in their mathematics classes. You know, there's another example is our double-dip classes. And at Frost, especially, you know, they'll have not only just the math class, but an additional support math class. So yes, they get two hours of math, but it doesn't sound as bad as it might because it's a smaller class. And it's a little more relaxed and less stressful. And I think the teachers do a great job to get the kids to understand that, hey, we can, you know, conquer these math concepts. So also, an example would be at Emerson, where they have co-teaching situation, more co-teaching situation, where there's two teachers in one class, you know, to help the students. At Emerson and Franklin, they run tutoring classes. At Emerson, it's before and after school. And at Franklin, it's during every hour of the day. Students can get some help from peer mentors, you know, upperclassmen during the day, during their specific hour. They might be in the math class, you know, as it breaks to independent learning time. You know, they might head down for the peer-to-peer tutoring to get another explanation of the concept that they went over on that very day. The Academic Success Skills Class is a credit recovery class we offer at each of the high schools. And in fact, some 25 to 35 students at each high school where, you know, they can earn credit for the class they might have missed or had struggled with earlier and also earn credit for additional courses in that same semester. So a lot of exciting, you know, programs through direct student supports. Next slide shows some examples and the impact for our balancing. And again, balancing is that, you know, creative ability to look at staff, look at our offerings, and look at class size and make those optimal. And we've added .2 high school counseling at each of our high schools, .1 at our middle schools in counseling. This allows more one-on-one, you know, counseling services. It relieves the counselors of some of their, a few of their many tasks and provide more one-to-one counseling. It provides more social and emotional guidance, allows for that kind of time. We have enhanced SAP, our Students Assistance Provider. We moved that up from a .75 at the high schools to a 1.0 at each high school and at the middle school from a .25 to a .5 halftime at the... resource room teachers. We also understand it's not just the lower end that benefits from the balancing staffing. It's our, it allows us to run some AP courses in our magnet programs. Our CAP-NIB programs operate with balanced staffing. We were allowed to run additional sections of some of our AP classes, like AP Stats and AP Physics or AP, you know, the APUSH, the US History. So it's very beneficial. We're allowed to make things mesh a lot more nicely, if you will. Also, the next slide shares some of additional opportunities that we accrue through the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. And maybe not as directly related. It's, it's more off on a tangent, if you will, but it certainly is a, the millage helps us, you know, run theater tech classes, which are connected to our PACs. And we build a stagecraft crew, you know, that learns the skills of running the, running the stage, our PACs. They're tremendous valuable career skills, about lighting and sound setup. We run a class at each of our high schools for that. We have pack managers. These are people we hire to oversee the tremendous investment of the community into our PACs. So we have two positions that cover our three PACs. They're college graduates, soon to be, one of them soon to be, and they're dedicated to stagecraft and the drama productions. Now we've, as you know, we've added boys and girls bowling. We have varsity teams at each of our, our high school, very successful teams. Boys and Girls Lacrosse will start in the spring. And we had our unified team last year coordinated through Stevenson High School. Our PLTW, our STEM pathway classes and the equipment that those classes require, as in 3D printers and the like, you know, we can do that with this additional, the additional funds that we, we gain, recruit from the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. So it's a, it's a tremendous boon. It's a hit the jackpot for us and our efforts to engage and impact kids. That's the secondary enhancement millage.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Brien is on her way up, and she's going to share with us a little bit about professional development, textbook and instructional resource replacement, which has been really an integral part of moving our, our core curriculum forward.
Thank you. Yes, so I wanted to share with you the impact of the Wayne, excuse me, County Enhancement Millage monies on all our content area and grade level resource materials. So as you know, when we first passed this millage, we put aside additional monies into our textbook budgets, which had been woefully thin for many, many years. And over the past three years, when we started in 1718, we purchased $860,000 worth of materials, textbook, instructional resources, online licenses, you know, the supplemental readers that might come with a specific program. During the 1819 school year, $777,000. This year, we have an anticipated budget of $1.4 million, and we actually have many textbook groups running this year. But as you know, sometimes it takes more than a year to come to a decision of a recommendation to you. So I'm not sure we'll be bringing that many materials to you this year, but that's what we have working. And then we already have rolled a couple sets of materials to next year, to the 2021 school year. I have to do both. So the impact of our textbook replacements, so we've touched 35 courses and grade levels. Again, beginning that first year, we touched our high school mathematics courses, our World Language Level One courses, and our middle school social studies. During the 1819 school year, we adopted ELA materials for ninth and 10th grade. Mr. Miga worked with our World Language teachers to purchase Level Two materials for Spanish, French, and German. We adopted a middle school science program that we have started using this year. And we also purchased K-4 guided reading materials, which is going to impact and improve our reading proficiency in all of our classrooms. It will help provide consistency for that high-quality Tier One programming that we'd like all our students to have. This year, we are looking at 11th and 12th grade ELA materials and, thank you, and our World Language Level Three and Four materials. We have humanities, psychology, and sociology, middle school and upper L mathematics. And over the next two years, as we write our integrated Science and Social Studies units in our K-4 buildings, we'll be purchasing the books that support those materials. So that work has started this year. And then, like I said, next year, we're looking at Physics Advanced NAP, Biology, and Middle School ELA. Thanks. Also, because of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage money, we've been able to increase the Academic Services Department. And we've been very fortunate to have literacy and instructional coaches in our elementary buildings. So we have five K-4 coaches and three instructional coaches. And so the, the model that we're following is very student-centered, which helps our teachers look at what their students' data says, and then choose a goal that they want to work on to improve their learning. It allows teachers to build a positive relationship with that coach and someone safe to take risks and try new things. Again, it's built on being data-driven and grounded in research. It's in short bursts, so then a teacher can move on and continue that work on their own, but the coach is available to them as they move on. And it involves individual teachers setting goals based on their students. Also, for the Academic Services Department, we increased Mrs. Marcosi's position from being a supervisor to a coordinator role, which has been able to offer that assessment role to support our buildings at a higher level. Mr. Hillard has a love of data that he is applying to many platforms and work with K through 12 teachers. We also hired an elementary curriculum coordinator, which allowed us to then take the K through six grades off of Mrs. Fankel. So she is a seven through 12 science, or social studies and ELA coordinator. And then Mr. Hillard's former position is also seven 12 for math and science. So it's given us the opportunity to, as we've adopted all of these new materials, then to provide teachers the support that they need as they're adopting them. We're not just moving right on and saying, we've purchased materials, I now need to move on to the next content area. But yet, we have more time in order to support our teachers with what they need. As Mr. McDonald talked about professional development, the Wayne County Enhancement Millage has tangentially allowed us to increase our professional development budget and support our teachers in multiple ways. But one of our most important ways is, you know, our climate and culture work that we've been working on. And so, as he mentioned, having Jimmy Cassis come to the district at the beginning of this year. He's coming next month to work with administrators and school improvement teams. And then he's going to kick off next school year also. So we have that consistent support with our vision of climate and culture. We also have worked to adjust our professional learning community plan for the district. And so we have sent people last summer to the PLC at Work Conference that was presented by Solution Tree, which is Rick and Becky DeForre's company, who were the first people to really build on that PLC work. And we're going to send our administrators this summer to the same conference. And then on March 10th, we'll be bringing in two presenters for all of our teachers on the PLC model. So that'll provide that consistency across our district. And then just what we've been able to impact at our elementary levels, we've been able to provide professional development on guided reading and skill-based intervention, and how does a teacher provide which, and when is the most important to do those things. We've had iReady for several years. We've been able to bring in consultants from iReady on how to use that information to best impact students, both in reading and in math. And then we've also been providing professional development on integrating Science and Social Studies. And we did that last year and this year for our K-4 teachers. And then another piece of those units that we're working on is, when do we, when is it important to have formative assessment to guide what I do next, and when should I be doing a summative assessment to see how this unit is going as a whole? Another piece that's really impacted our elementary classrooms is we've been using the GELN Essential Literacy Practices. So those came out of the state of Michigan a few years ago. And we have been providing our teachers the opportunity to go through the trainings. They have K-3 Essential Literacy Practices, IV, V Essential Literacy Practices. And this year, they released VI through XII disciplinary literacy practices. And they're coming out with mathematics ones, too. They've just started those this year. And this gives all of our teachers, again, that consistency, so that when we are using those in our classroom, we, everyone has the same understanding of what those essential practices are. And lastly, at our secondary level, our professional development offerings that we've been able to offer is, again, our middle schools are using iReady now for students as a way to check, to see how they are doing, using that diagnostic, both in reading and math. So we've been bringing in those consultants to work with our middle school teachers. The Project Lead the Way training, we've been able to send the teachers who will be teaching those courses to the week-long or two-week-long trainings in order to use that model. And then this year, again, more iReady training. The new social studies standards came out. So David Hales from Wayne County Rees has come out and has been working with our social studies teachers. Mrs. Caldwell is providing and encouraging our high school and middle school teachers to go to the Next Gen Science Standards. That's a week-long training, so that they have that basis for understanding. So as we move forward and shift to the Next Gen Science Standards in our high schools, that we have that professional development under our wing, and then additional Project Lead the Way training this summer.
Phew.
Phew. That's right.
It's a great investment, a great investment.
We are blessed.
Yes, in, in the instructional expertise for our staff.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. We're going to-
Do you have a question for Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
If I could. To go back, you were talking about the textbook.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you said we had 1.4 million budgeted for this year.
Yes.
But you weren't sure whether our committees were going to be able to bring to the board those textbooks that we may want to replace.
Correct.
And then there's a budget for next year.
Correct.
If they don't bring the recommendations to us this year, does that 1.4 roll over then to the next year?
Yes. So we have targeted right now those content areas for next year, that it's at $500,000. But for this year, if we don't use the money, say, for upper L math, then we would take those funds and roll them into the following year, because we're not ready to bring a recommendation. So we won't be purchasing anything yet. So those funds will move to next year.
So they sort of follow the textbooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So Dr. Terrell and Mr. Francis are going to bring us home.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
So although the Student Services slide is one, it is a mighty slide.
It is.
We have-
I know, too.
Student Services has the distinct pleasure of being able to support all students throughout our district, from our youngest students, two years, nine months, to our students all the way up to age 26. So the Wayne County Enhancement Millage has offered us the opportunity to hire five new elementary resource teachers. So as you know, all of our buildings have special education students in them that we support, and our students have unique needs. So this allowed us the opportunity to lower the caseload for multiple of our K-4 buildings in order for us to meet the unique needs of those learners. So being able to have those smaller caseloads, have more targeted, focused, specialized instruction for our students. We were able to hire an additional .5 occupational therapist for our K-12 schools. So again, looking at our, the unique needs of our students, looking at the sensory needs for some of our students, as well as the fine motor and gross motor needs of our students, we're able to now lower those caseloads for our now five occupational therapists district-wide in order to support our students. We've been able to hire one and a half additional school social workers. So as Mrs. Scott was talking about, the social-emotional well-being of our students. So being able to have an additional 1.5 social worker across our school district has allowed for us to better meet the needs, the social-emotional needs of our students, provide evaluations for our students and families, as well as crisis intervention for our students who need more significant supports. We also have an additional 1.9 speech and language pathologists across our K-6 schools as well. This allows our speech and language pathologists to have more focus on multi-tiered supports for our students, so that some of those students who just need a little bit of extra support with sometimes just articulation, being able to catch them early in our kindergarten and first grades, so that perhaps they never move on to have that IEP. And also, as speech and language pathologists, they are literacy specialists, working with phonemes, et cetera. So being able to pull some of those groups together to work on literacy has also allowed us that opportunity to reach more students throughout the day. We are very excited to now have 2.0 behavior interventionists in our district. You will have the distinct pleasure of meeting Sarah and Rick at the upcoming board meeting, where they will talk about the supports that they provide all of our students across this district. Some of the most significant things that they do are collaborate with teachers, working hand-in-hand with teachers in how to support students with extreme behaviors across our district, working with behavior intervention plans, et cetera, working with individual students as well, meeting one-on-one with some of our students to have that continuity of support, bringing the wraparound services into our school system, where the outside community resources come into our buildings with families, with students, with our staff, to promote the best social-emotional status for our students, as well as teaching our staff about trauma-informed care. Again, some of our students come from trauma, and helping our staff, our students, and our administrators really have a better understanding of what that looks like, sounds like for our students, so that we are meeting their needs where they're at. We also have the .5 teacher leader at Jackson. As you heard at the Jackson presentation, a couple weeks ago, you heard that there are almost over 200 evaluations in students that we meet the needs of every day at Jackson. They have 600 to 700 students come through the door every single day. So having 1.0 of Mary Crombez is very helpful in meeting the needs of the students, the staff, as well as the families. And then, as we have talked about over the past year, Snap and Read is available for all students with an @levoniapublicschools.org email address. So not only does it level text for students, so a PDF, a website, if it's at too high of a reading level for them, they can lower that reading level to meet their unique individual needs. It's also a foreign language translator, so they're able to hear the- to have that continuity of support, bringing the wraparound services into our school system, where the outside community resources come into our buildings with families, with students, with our staff, to promote the best social-emotional status for our students, as well as teaching our staff about trauma-informed care. Again, some of our students come from trauma. And helping our staff, our students, and our administrators really have a better understanding of what that looks like, sounds like, for our students so that we are meeting their needs where they're at. We also have the .5 teacher leader at Jackson. As you heard at the Jackson presentation a couple of weeks ago, you heard that there are almost over 200 evaluations in students that we meet the needs of every day at Jackson. They have 600 to 700 students come through the door every single day. So having 1.0 of Mary Crombez is very helpful in meeting the needs of the students, the staff, as well as the families. And then, as we have talked about over the past year, Snap and Read is available for all students with an @levonypublicschools.org email address. So not only does it level text for students, so a PDF, a website. If it's at too high of a reading level for them, they can lower that reading level to meet their unique individual needs. It's also a foreign language translator, so they're able to hear the foreign language, as well as interpret materials, which is nice. And then, it's also a word prediction tool for some of our struggling writers. So the student's able to put the topic in, and then, the computer program loads behind the scenes all of the vocabulary associated with that particular topic. So when the student starts to write, all of the words start to pop up for them. It predicts what the student wants to write, so it enhances their writing ability.
Very cool. You're right, there was a lot in that slide.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot to support our learners across the district. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Francis, are you ready to share from the Operations Department and wrap us up?
I am, and I have two slides, only because I used a much larger font. And so, it's sort of cheating. So we have, and obviously, Operations covers multiple departments in the district. And we've had the wonderful opportunity, just starting off with the bus and maintenance vehicle replacement. The board knows that we've gone through multiple bus replacements, starting with the 2013 bond. But we did not replace all of the buses with the bond dollars. So we were able to make a purchase of 77 passenger gasoline buses. And those were, there are nine of them, but there are 77 passenger buses. And we were able to retire buses from the 2004 year that we purchased them. And upcoming, we're looking to do some more with that VW grant. We also replaced a bus garage truck and three maintenance trucks. These are like the plow trucks, et cetera. And also, in the realm of custodial staff, we were able to add two FTEs. That's basically two bodies. But they were split amongst a few different buildings, basically fulfilling or filling out the evening from a part-time, four-hour in a building, being able to make it a full eight-hour second shift in those buildings to help pick back up some of the hours that we used to have in those schools. We also were recently able to raise the sub-custodian rate. We were bringing in substitute custodians at $9.50 an hour, and then raising them to $10 an hour after 90 workdays. And now, we are bringing them in at $10 an hour and raising them to $11.50 per hour after 90 workdays. It's a more competitive rate. We did some looking around from our neighbors, from anywhere from neighboring K-12 school districts, as well as even Schoolcraft, in seeing that we were underpaying these folks. And this is really the pool of where we get our eventual full-time staff in the custodial ranks. We also were able to add a full-time systems analyst in the Information Technology Department. Right now, the past couple of years, and ongoing, we have been updating, and the board knows some of this with regard to Windows 10. We were still using Windows 7, which is literally obsolete and went the way of the dodo bird and all the items that function with them. We had to get on board with upgrading to Windows 10. And actually, bringing in a person, after looking closely at whether we should have perhaps a third-party come in, do the type of coding and work in the background to be able to bring all of our systems up to that versus hiring a full-time person, we're going to get far more work in multiple areas and projects from our own full-time IT person than going out and spending $200 or more per hour on third-party contractors in the realm of information technology. And then, the budget that Mrs. Smith had put in for fiber maintenance, we have, we went from basically no set budget to about $20,000 a year, up to $20,000 in repairs. Not that we use that all the time, but any that we would use, we get 50% back on the E-rate reimbursement. And hiring additional standby bus drivers. We had, when we could get them, about three to five drivers that are, they're employees of Levon Public Schools, and they are drivers, but they may not have their own daily route or run. And we went from about three, four, or five, depending on what we could hold on to. Now, we can do eight, nine, 10. It's always, it's a little bit of flux based upon the market of employees. It's such an important piece for the Transportation Department because for the past couple of years, most of the office staff were oftentimes out driving buses because we didn't have enough backups to be able to handle on days and absentee days and like we are now in the flu season, people being out, et cetera. So these were all very important for the behind-the-scenes, getting kids to and from school, getting our computers and network working, all of that type of work around the district.
Terrific. Thank you both. And we will wrap up just by our final slide to share the importance of the financial stability that we have in the district based on this Enhancement Milage.
Thank you. One thing I'm very proud of, as we've heard all of these wonderful additions that have been possible through the Enhancement Milage, it hasn't been at the sacrifice of the financial stability. We've been very judicious with the additions that we've made. We've spent a lot of time before we brought these recommendations to the board. So I'm happy to say that because of that, we've also been able to see our fund balance increase over the last number of years because of this Enhancement Milage. Just to show you what we're predicting for the end of the 1920 school year, fund balance of 18, just over 18%. And just to give folks a perspective of what that means, the Michigan School Business Officials organization recommends that we have at least a 15% to 20% fund balance. And a lot of reasons why a district would want to maintain a fund balance. First off, it's that stability. We can have changes in our funding that can come, you know, sometimes even after the school year has started. The ability of the district to weather that and make appropriate adjustments to our expenditures is possible when you have a fund balance. If you don't have any money in the reserves, you're having to make potentially cuts mid-year. So that's one of the benefits. Another benefit is just for cash flow purposes. We receive our state aid from the state through 11 payments a year, which means we don't get any payment in September, although our staff come back normally in late August. So we're having to make payroll, you know, in the month of September without that state aid payment. So prior to the Enhancement Milage, we were having to borrow money. And then, you have interest costs associated with that borrowing. We have not had to borrow money for the last at least three, four years. We've had the cash that we've needed to make all the payments that we've had to make. Another thing is, as far as our credit rating. In fact, Moody's, the rating agency, had reached out to the district, I think, last year. And we were upgraded in our rating. And one item that was cited was the increase in our fund balance. They saw that as a safer investment for people into the school district. So we've been able to build the fund balance while making these significant investments in our students. So the first set of numbers is what the financial picture has been each year since 2016-17. And the bottom set of numbers is, had we added these expenditures, which I hope hearing the impact on our students will validate for our community, that these are not, you know, frivolous additions that have been made. These are very thoughtful and things that are having a very positive impact on our staff. So very justified. But if we had to back out the Wayne County Enhancement Milage revenue, this year, we would be looking at an ending fund balance of under 5%. Under 5%. And again, for perspective, the state of Michigan, the Department of Treasury identifies districts with an under 5% fund balance as districts with potential financial distress. And then, they have additional reporting requirements on the district. You have to share your budget assumptions. And they're tracking and monitoring you because there's a, you know, that signifies to them that something could be coming that we don't want to see. So again, we've been able to keep the stability in our district and yet, add these fantastic additions for our students.
Okay, so we'll just close with a reminder of our proposed timeline for the board. If there's any adjustments that you think we need to make, you can certainly let me know. And please share with me in the next couple of weeks, any questions or follow-ups, additional information that may be helpful for you. And then, we'll bring this back to our March 2nd study session, our March 16th Committee of the Whole, and finally, a resolution for the board's consideration at our regular voting meeting on March 23rd. Any questions?
Just thank you to all of you for putting all that information together. It really highlights the impact that the Enhancement Milage has had on our community.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for just an inordinate amount of work. The effort it takes to put something like that together, it's extraordinary. But it's so important that everyone understands the impact of these dollars and what it means when we have them versus when we don't have them. Also, is this going to be available for the public on our website?
It will because we presented it here. So this will be part of this video presentation. Along with the PowerPoint will be one of our links under the board videos.
Thank you.
I'd also like to offer, if any community members are watching this and maybe have a question that hasn't been covered tonight, they're more than welcome to reach out to me. My contact information is on our website. I'm sure, though, if they call the main line, the person that answers can connect them with my office. I'd be happy to discuss this.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And again, we really appreciate all the work that you did.
A mic.
Thank you again. And that concludes Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Bounderfield, and thank you, Mrs. Smith. That'll take us to Item 4, our Curriculum Committee. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Mrs. O'Brien to talk to us about the Annual Education Report. She's got her hands full, but she's coming.
Would you like help?
So I have for you a copy of our District Annual Education Report. I got it. One of these days, it'll just be easy the first time. So I have for you a copy of the District Annual Education Report. It was just posted to the district website about a little over a week ago. And as you know, this is a state-of-Michigan requirement. Every year, the state of Michigan gives us a template of what we need to have in our annual education report. They give us a window to update each school and the district report overall. And then, we put it on each one of our schools' websites. And we take from their school improvement, annual education part, and pieces of it are added into ours. So I'm just going to quickly walk you through this. I do want to remind you, this is based on last year's data. So MDE is six months or more behind every year when we put up our annual education report. So it's the 1920 because this is when we're posting it on our website, but it's based on the 1819 data. So the opening letter is pretty much a format given to us by the state of Michigan and has required text in it. And then, on page 2, all the way to page 8, is the key initiatives for each one of our schools. So we take that directly off of their annual education report. And Mrs. Betsel and I just copy and put their core learnings in there. I do want to make you aware on page, oh, page 9. So Franklin High School has been identified as a targeted support school, which I shared with you last fall when the labels came out for accountability. And so, that is noted in our annual education report. And it's just so that our community is aware of that. So we do not have any other schools that have been identified either as targeted support or comprehensive support. So none of them, none of our schools have a label, other than Franklin.
Okay, and a quick question. So that's for the 2018-19 school year, right? Based on 2018-19?
It's actually because of how this works. It's for this school year based on last year's results. So if comes spring, so a targeted support school has one area or one subgroup that is below where it should be. So a larger gap between their score, overall score, and their subgroup score. So targeted support is a one-year identification. A comprehensive is three-year. So when Franklin takes the SAT again this spring, this could come back off. Oh, gotcha. So there aren't requirements from MDE. It's an internal district support to, for myself to work with Mr. Pacey and his school improvement team to look at that subgroup and what they can do. And so then, he adds that as part of his school improvement plan, and he adds it as a part of his data collection. You're welcome. So then, all the way through page 11, page, oh, those numbers don't match, do they? Because then, after page 11 is page 10 again, where it says District Profile. So that's just our demographics. And so, that we collect that information. We have a copy of our mission statement and shared vision, our collective commitments. On page 14 is our review of our school improvement. You usually keep two years of school improvement goals on there. So when we, when I worked with DOI and the Academic Services Department, we set three-year goals. Most of our goals are broad. And really, the meat of the goal comes under the measurable objectives and the activities that we do. So these goals on here that say 2018 to 2020, we're not changing the overall goal, but we'll change the metrics that we use or the activities that we use. So those are on there. A little bit about our district school improvement team on there. There's a review of our core curriculum. This comes from our parent guides that we share with parents at conferences in the fall. Page 18 is where the state-required assessment data that we put on, your local and your state assessment. And again, this is two years' worth of data, but it's anywhere from a year and a half old to a half a year old. So we have our early literacy benchmarks, our reading data, our common assessments at middle school, and our iReady at middle school. And then, on page 20, we have our social studies DBQ and our COGAT results. And then, page 20 through 21 reviews our homeschool partnership, which we have board policy for our parent involvement. And so, we always put that board policy right in there. And then, the last two pages just gives you an overview of our specialized programs in the district at the elementary, middle, high school level. And then, the last page on the blue back cover is the required student assessment data that MDE wants stated. And two years ago, they said you could just link it to the Michigan Department of Education's website instead of list another 25 pages of charts. So instead, we list what data they say you should have, and then, the website link for you to go to it. And school annual education reports are the same. So they list their, the link to their data instead of printing or having an additional number of pages for that. What questions can I answer for you?
Questions or comments from Mrs. O'Brien?
Mrs. Burt? Yes, going back to pages roughly 6 through 10 or so. The content from each school, what was the source of that content, again?
Their annual education report. So it is their self-identified key initiatives.
Okay, got it.
So they, what they're working on. And so, each year, we take it right out of theirs and we put it in our district plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Simmons?
Looking at iReady data, there seems to be some consistency as far as students reading at grade level. There's a high percentage, a relatively high percentage at kindergarten. And in both years, that seems to fade as the students go on. Is that, in your opinion, Is that, in your opinion, you know, to me, that's a little bit of an alarming trend? Is that, in your opinion, a result of the test? Is it, you know, students further, going further behind? What's your thoughts on that?
So we've been using I-Ready for several years now, but maybe not to the same level that we have in the last year and a half. You know, and I'll share a little bit about the third grade reading bill. But in, in an effort to really dig deep into I-Ready results and use it to improve individual students' growth and look at their areas of weakness, we've gotten better at that. And although our results do decline from kindergarten to sixth grade, if you look, our results have gone up each year, last year over the year before. So we're getting better at that. There is a piece to it. The students take that final test right after M-step. So third through sixth grade, that's a lot of online testing. And teachers will say there's some test fatigue. And so they might not feel like this is an accurate measure. And remember, in reading, that's why we also give the Fanta's and Pennell reading assessment for our kids who are below, so that we have both those measures to give us that information. We also are doing an analysis of our M-step scores to our end-of-the-year I-Ready to see what that correlation is. We tend to outperform this percentage on the M-step.
So would it be accurate to say that your kindergartner taking the spring 18 assessment would be the first grader in the spring 19 assessment?
Most of them, yes.
Yeah. So if you look at that as well, you would see generally minor drop-offs as well.
Yes.
So again, that would be something that would concern me because it seems pretty consistent.
And we're studying that. Our gap increases as kids get older. So that's something that we need to get better at identifying the right area and then providing them the right interventions. And so that's been a strong focus these last couple of years. But we're not 100% there in providing and knowing what individual students need.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Now we can look at the Read by Grade Three legislation. Also, with Mrs. O'Brien helping us?
I will be. I'll let you do four.
So what we're going to be sharing with you this evening is an overview of information that our parents across the district either have received or will be receiving. Mrs. O'Brien is going to take us through the Read by Grade Three PowerPoint presentation that is being shared at each of our K-4 schools. All parents at the school are invited. And all parents at the school are invited to these presentations. And special outreach has gone to parents of second-grade students and third-grade students who have been identified as struggling readers, who are on an individualized reading intervention plan. And so Mrs. O'Brien is going to take us briefly through the Read by Grade Three PowerPoint presentation, again, that's happening at each school. So if a parent may not have the opportunity to attend at their school, they'll be able to hear it here. And then we also wanted to be sure that you had the information that we have been communicating to parents over the past three years with regard to their reading proficiency that we report out to them three times a year, as well as information about the Read by Grade Three legislation. And you know that this year is the implementation year for the mandatory retention component. So we wanted to spend a bit of time on that. Mrs. O'Brien?
Awesome. Thank you. So you actually have two packets. You have one with the slides that I'm going to quickly share with you, and then the other one with some of the documentation that we've been using. And so I may refer to one or the other. Like Superintendent Oakwood said, this is a presentation that we developed as a group of elementary principals to provide all parents at each elementary school the information about the law, what we've been doing to prepare for students to be identified this year, and what we will do if a child is identified. So I'm just going to walk you through the presentation. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions, so. So a little bit of review of what the law is. In 2016, it passed the law that requires identification of struggling learners and that they may have to repeat third grade beginning in the 2019-2020 school year. This, and I'm not going to show this little video. So this is a 53-second video from Michigan Department of Education that we inserted into the presentations for schools. And it's a great way of showing how important it is to read to kids and with kids. One piece of it is it ends with, "Your child might be retained." And so I shared with principals, and so some principals are planning on showing it. Some are not, because we have a stance that we don't believe retention is the right thing to do for our students. So Michigan Department of Education has this video, and it's a part of our slideshow. But we also didn't want to start off this presentation at PTA meeting saying, "Your child may be retained," and then spend the rest of the presentation saying, "So we think we have a better plan than retention." So what have we been doing to prepare? So each year, students are assessed in reading at the beginning of the year, within the first 30 days. In Livonia, we use I-Ready and the Fanta's and Pennell reading assessment. We utilize both of them in order to determine if a student is more than one grade level below and should be getting an individualized reading plan. So we don't use one data point, we use two. So they need to be below in both. So this is an example. In your second packet, you have both a reading proficiency report. So this is sent home three times a year after each round of testing. It gives a parent their child's test results and gives them some information about what those tests mean. And on the back is a place for them, if they've been identified as being more than one grade level below, they will be placed on an individualized reading plan. And please plan on meeting on, and the teacher puts in the date. So because this is done the initial time in the fall, parent-teacher conferences, we move those up into October so that teachers could have these meetings with parents. Within, we have 30 days to test, and then we have 30 days to meet with a parent and have them sign the individualized reading plan. So we moved up our parent-teacher conferences in order to provide that information to parents at that conference. And then there's a sample individualized reading plan that's blank that you have in your other packet also. So this is the template that schools use and fill in the information for each child. We also provide parents reading activities to do at home. This is just an example that came from Wayne County RISA of some phonemic awareness activities that parents could do. So that's one area of reading kindergarten, first-grade students tend to struggle with. And so teachers provide parents with things that parents can do at home when they meet with them and give them their individualized reading plan. And so parents then have their part of what they're going to do to support students at home. And then each one of our K-4s also hold a family literacy night. And we began that a few years ago, that every school, a few schools were doing it, but now all of our schools provide parents with those family literacy nights and activities to do. So the law also requires that if a student is identified, they must receive targeted reading interventions daily. Those interventions can be from their classroom teacher, the elementary support teacher, the Title I interventions, or the resource room teacher. If a student is identified as special education, that does not prohibit them from getting an individualized reading plan. The law does not have an exemption for them. So if a student is already on an IEP, thank you, an individualized education plan, they still are required by the State of Michigan to have an individualized reading plan. So, yes. So we've built on that system of supports. Mrs. Scott talked a little bit about that intervention block. We have created a schedule for schools to be very systemic and systematic in working with students so that that elementary support teacher, or if you're at a Title I building, that that time schedule is very supportive so kids aren't missing other things. So a second-grade group of teachers all know from this time to this time, this is when my kids would get additional support, and I'd be giving support to a group myself. And so it's that intervention block to support kids with reading. And then last year, we purchased the new guided reading materials, which then gives us that consistency in all of our classrooms. We've also been working with our teachers, like I shared in the previous presentation, just on how to differentiate not just providing kids reading at their level, but how to, what the skills of reading are and what, how to provide those interventions with, in short bursts, in order to fill some of those beginning reading holes. And then how to assess and identify what kids' holes are and how to provide those targeted interventions. I-Ready is one of those tools. It gives us diagnostic information. But we also have created some screeners that help teachers identify with their reading groups what kids need and how they're doing with the things that they're teaching them. So again, this is, going back to this presentation, it's for parents in the building. So now we're sharing with parents that this is the school year that students could be identified by the State of Michigan for a recommendation for retention. When this bill came out, we didn't know what assessment data the state was going to use or what level they were going to draw a line at. And in fact, when it first came out, they led us to believe they wouldn't be using the M-step overall score. Last year, they came out with a score of 1252 or below would be the identifier line. It's about 5% of the State of Michigan. So we let parents know through this presentation that that's what the state will be using, is their overall M-step results. If they're below this score, then they could be identified for retention by the State of Michigan. So this June, the State of Michigan will send home letters directly to these students once they have their test scores. We get initial results. And so now that it's that year, the state is saying you should dig in and see their initial results and kind of get an idea of who these kids are that might get the letter from the State of Michigan and begin to plan for it. So we do get early results. It was always not results you would necessarily say you would count on, but it seems like that's, that initial result might be the starting point that we're going to be using for this. Again, 5% for Livonia. Two years ago, it would have been 20 students. Last year, it would have been 18. So the bar is quite low, based on what the State of Michigan has chosen. So at this point, we're sharing with parents that students may be exempt from retention based on parent or teacher request. And at this point in the slideshow, at the bottom of each slide, we say, you know, in Livonia Public Schools, we believe that retention is not the answer to reading below grade level. And as you look through the rest of the slides, the next several, we keep that at the bottom because that's not what we believe. So again, if parents at this presentation, if I don't want my student retained, so parents have the right to request a good cause exemption by contacting the school district within 30 days of receiving the notice. A good cause exemption must be approved by the superintendent or her designee. So again, we're going to be proactive. We're not going to wait 30 days for parents to contact us. When you think about it, the letters have to be out by June 1st. 30 days goes into summer. So we're going to be contacting our parents. We're going to be setting up those meetings. We're going to be beginning that conversation. Okay? So these are just some examples allowable reasons for good cause exemptions. And these come directly from the State of Michigan. So if a student is on an IEP or a 504 plan, that is a good cause exemption. If a student is limited English proficient and has had less than three years of instruction, that's a good cause exemption. If a student has received intensive reading interventions for two or more years but still has a deficiency and was previously retained, that's a good cause exemption. If a student has been continuously enrolled in a school district or charter school for less than two years, and there's evidence that the student was not provided an appropriate individualized reading plan, that's a good cause exemption. So if we have students who move into our district and we don't, we're not provided the information of what that child received in another district, that would be a good cause exemption. So a student's parent or guardian can request a good cause exemption. And again, we'll be meeting with those parents and we'll support them with planning for that good cause exemption and following the law with what is expected on data collection and looking at what the student's strengths are and what is the best plan for that student. We have created, the last page in your second packet, it's yellow, is we've created a portfolio, and it's just a folder. But one of the good cause exemptions is how a student performs on classwork and class tests and other areas of the curriculum. And so we want to have a plan for teachers to collect that over the school year. And if a student is identified, there's other things we will download and print. But this is a place to begin to collect that student work to show how a student is doing on the curriculum.
So this is part of what would be reviewed when it says that the petition can be made, and then the superintendent would review that information. This is, this is part of the comprehensive look at that child's entire body of work as opposed to using one assessment they took in the spring of their third-grade year to make that determination.
So the procedures that we would put into place is, a student is identified by the State of Michigan. And so then we would meet with that parent and review the request that they have. So that would be the first step. And again, this would happen at the building level with that building team of, who know that child the best, the child study team in the elementary school. And then they would begin to plan what is the best recommendation for that student, knowing that we believe that moving to fourth grade with additional supports is what we believe is the best way to support that child, not repeat third grade. And then we would determine what that, which good cause exemption we would be following. So if I have a student who was retained in kindergarten already, that is a good cause exemption. So they're below grade level. That was one of the examples I gave you. So we would identify that that is the reason that we're going to pass them to fourth grade and provide them and continue to provide them the interventions that they need. And then at least 30 days before school starts, so that's at the end of the year, we would be making that plan with that parent, planning for them for the following year. And before school starts, we would have documentation in writing with that parent of what that plan is moving forward for the following year. These pieces are, we have a committee of principals who are creating the documentation that we're going to use. And I'll share that with you once we have that. But they're creating the forms that we want to have district-wide so we have that systemic data collection for all of our students. Any questions on that?
Yes, I thought so. So in our district, with our 18 to 20-ish students that we are anticipating that this may be the case, are we waiting for the parent to initiate this? Is the staff at times initiating this process?
What we'd like to do is preempt the parent from receiving that letter from the state as their first notification. So what we will use, as Mrs. O'Brien referenced, is the preliminary data set that we receive on individual students. So you know, it often takes months to get the complete data set from MDE once our students have taken the M-step. They do have some raw data on every student. So we are going to, one, be administering the ELA portion of the test first. Then Mr. Hillard will be able to pull that raw data on each third grader to determine whether or not they are below the threshold of the 12. whether or not they are below the threshold of the 1252 that has been set by the state. So although there may be some variance within a point or two, we feel, we believe that we'd rather err on the side of caution and contact any parent whose child is below that threshold or very, very near to that threshold, one, indicating that they may receive this letter by the state of Michigan, what it is meant to communicate, and how we would help them through the process of requesting and reviewing for a good cause exemption. They will then also receive the formal notification from the state, but we would like to preempt that by being the first contact with them. So that would initially happen at the school level by the teacher and principal, because that's the person with whom they're most familiar and that they know the best. And then from that point, we will support each of the schools. Again, we don't know because these students have never taken a standardized test before. We don't have data on this group of third graders. If we used last year's group of third graders, there would have been approximately 18. Not every school had students identified, and so there may have been three or four at one particular school. About half of those would have qualified for one of the other good cause exemptions that did not even require us to go through the process. So perhaps there are already students who are on an IEP. Perhaps they're English language learners who have only been in the country and receiving instruction for a certain period of time. So about half of those were already qualified for a good cause exemption without making that request. So if you think about that across our elementary schools, that might have been left about eight or nine students with whom to work. So we feel very confident we'll be able to work directly and personally with each family.
And I do have, I'm thankful, and when I think about Livonia Public Schools, I'm not surprised that we are proactive on this and, and have been. And Mrs. Oka says, you and I were talking, before we even started this meeting, why, earlier in the day, these are initiatives that we've been taking with our students long before the legislature passed
Yes.
laws about reading. We seek to educate all of our students. We don't put intensive reading supports in because they passed a law. That's what we do, because we're Livonia Public Schools, and that's what most school districts do. We're having to go through a lot of hoops now because of this law. But, but this is not something new to us in terms of how we reach our, our most struggling learners.
Right.
One other question I had, we frequently see children moving in the summer, and sometimes those are our highest need learners because they, they move more frequently, which puts them into higher need. What are we planning on doing for, over the summer, if, if we have kids that aren't LPS students today, but by September they're going to be? What's
If they register with us prior to the school year?
Yes, like they, they, they show up before they want to school. Sure. But, but sometime between the last day of school
Right.
in June and the first day of school in September.
Yeah.
Because sometimes those are, are some of our highest need students, because, because they, they do move more frequently, and therefore, keeping continuous instruction is more challenging. Are we going back to their, I imagine their previous school district, or?
Yeah, we would, we would certainly look to their prior school district to determine what process that district had gone through to review the good cause exemptions and whether or not that had been granted. If it hadn't, we would probably want to go back through and review it once again before we started the school year. There are requirements that you have to put in place if you move a child on to fourth grade. You have to have them with a highly qualified teacher of English, English language arts. You have to provide more intense intervention than they received prior. So a lot of that will, will, will require us to look back at what interventions were in place for those students at, at their prior school.
Yep. Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you. My question is along that line. Let's say a, a family receives a letter and they're, and they're very upset. Do we anticipate these students that are in danger of being retain, retained, to pull, move out of the district or move somewhere else because they want to avoid the state's imposition, should I say, or no? I mean, because does this, in, if you went to a private school, let's say, would they tend to maybe pull their child out and try a private school where they may not have to take the M-Step?
They could.
I just, I question that because you might have an influx of students that are moving around due to being pretty much targeted, that they're going to be retained, and that, I guess that's my question, what do we, is there anything, a parent can just pull their child, correct? And decide that they're going to move districts? But they probably wouldn't go back into public because, this public sector, because they would just be flagged in that next area.
Yeah, because each child does have an individualized, a unique code. So every time they take a standardized test, that, that would
It will follow them.
And one of the things you'll also see in your packet, is it in the flyer in this packet, or is it in the other packet?
It's in the second packet.
Okay. One of the things we're trying to communicate clearly, and you'll see in the read by grade three flyer, which is the green and blue flyer, as well as the FAQ, that we, we try to make abundantly clear what our position is
Sure.
on mandatory retention. At the very end of that, you'll see specific quotes that, and responses that I shared with the Detroit Free Press back in the fall, and I've, I've shared those with you prior. But we're trying to be very clear and very public about that. We are, we certainly have every intent to follow the law as written. What we are saying to, to our parents is, we believe there are better options for students beyond mandatory retention in order to meet their needs. But you're right, it, it certainly will be disconcerting to parents who receive that, which is why we want to try to get out in front of it
Sure. And let them know that you're really here to support them
Absolutely.
in any way you can, because I mean, that can really be devastating
Absolutely.
to receive a letter like that
Yes, without question.
For some of these families.
Yes, without question.
Can I just, so, and also if you think, if a student has been struggling and more than one grade level below on both of our assessments, they've already been on a plan for the whole year.
For possibly three years prior.
Right, but so, and this is the first time they've taken M-Steps, so we don't have any idea of how kids do on the state testing until third grade. So we have some information, and we've been communicating with parents of kids who are below grade level along. So, a presentation like this at a PTA meeting, you know, the, the information that we're putting on our website and asking our, our community to review helps people know what's coming. But I think getting that information from their school and their classroom teacher and the principal that they know will help support them
Support them.
through that
Process.
that process that, if they get identified.
Okay. Mr. Sitters?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. I think, you know, if someone does get a letter and they feel that, you know, that maybe they need to pull their kid out or whatever, I think, you know, the, it's very clear that, you know, there are options for them not to be retained and to have continued interventions. I've had discussions with some people I know, colleagues, that did not read, read by grade three, and there's some of the more successful people I know. So, there is a developmental aspect to this, that, you know, it's an important milestone to be reading by grade three, but there, with, you know, more intervention, that it's possible that, you know, they can be obviously very successful. It doesn't take into, this doesn't take into account how the student could maybe struggle a little bit in reading but be a math and science whiz, right?
Sure.
It's, they could be really academically successful in every other area and still be struggling. And ultimately, I, I do hope that parents do take advantage of this. You know, there's been some studies, looking back at Florida first initiated this, and it kind of spread when their governor went state to state telling, encouraging states to do this, right? One, they've invested a lot, lot more money in lowering class sizes and interventions. But even then, with a lot more investment, what you saw is short-term gains the first couple of years, and then complete falloff by the time they graduated. And you saw outcomes like increased dropouts and psychological impacts. So, this has been studied, and it's well documented that retention is one of the few things you can do that actually harms kids. So, you know, I do hope parents, you know, just because of the state, this law exists, I hope you have good conversations with your principal, your teachers, the, the district here, to make sure that you're well informed if this is the right decision for your child.
Great point. Mrs. Bradford?
Sorry, one more question. The M-Step starts in the third grade, so that's why we do not have any data prior to the other grades to look in and see.
Sure, I mean, we have, on, on how they would do on a standardized test.
Correct. Yep. They've never taken a state standardized test.
Sure, and third grade's the first time.
Yep.
Lovely. Thank you.
Mrs. Batafield?
A couple of questions. Is there any discussion about, for this small group of, of students, having any kind of summer interventions or anything like that? So, like, when we go to our conventions and stuff, there's like book packets you can send home with kids over the summer and like little prizes and stuff.
Yep. I think, I think it's in the slideshow, but, so we historically have run two different Title I summer camps, and I give you a little summary every fall after them. So, I've applied for a grant, and we are going to open up our summer camps to any students, not just from our Title I buildings. And Mrs. Pearson and I are revamping the, what students need in order to go, so we're having more of an academic focus. So we want it still to be an enjoyable time, but we're going to set a criteria, yep, and a focus on literacy. And then students who have been identified, we're going to invite parents as a part of their plan to send their child to that camp. You know, it might not work with every family's, you know, summer schedule, but that is one of our plans, is to offer them that opportunity to send their child for four weeks, four times a week, so 16 days, instruction to help support the growth that they made in third grade, and hopefully propel them to, to keep that ball rolling going into fourth grade. So that's one of the things we're planning on offering.
Okay. A second, I guess, observation, and this is kind of stems from Mr. Sitters noticing the, the drop-off from kindergarten to sixth grade.
Yep.
Is that, and, and I experienced this with one of my kids, was lucky enough to have reading recovery. And we, my husband and I both thought, wow, this would be a great thing for every kid to have, because they're learning. And, and, so I'm from the old school, right? So, and maybe the kids are already doing this, but in learning, in reading recovery, they learned like tips and tricks, and, you know, when, when we all learned to read, it was like you sat down and you read a book and you learned to read the words, but there was not really any skill building. Is, how is that covered where the kids are, because like seeing the statistics, I'm kind of looking, I'm like going, oh, well, maybe, you know, kids can read, you know, whatever, dinosaur roar and all that kind of stuff. But when you start getting to the harder ones, are they getting that additional skill building where they can, you know what I'm saying?
Yep. So, you know, as a principal of a Title I school for six years, we did a lot of providing that double dip, and kids got that second opportunity to get a guided reading lesson. What we have found in using the I-Ready diagnostic, and it gave us some of those skills, phonemic awareness, phonics, a vocabulary hole. So that diagnostic gives us more specific information about a student's holes, and now what we've been doing is building a model where classroom teachers are working on skill-based intervention, not just that reading comprehension with guided reading. And so students who are below grade level are getting both. They're getting guided reading and they're getting a skill-based, like, to fill that hole. If I'm not able to, you know, do blends at the beginning of a word. And so, teachers are doing that both at their small group table, and then the ESTs or the interventionists are also working on those.
Okay.
So they're getting both.
And does that cover, so that covers all the kids, though? All the kids take the I-Ready?
Yep.
And if there's holes for any of the kids?
Yep.
It's not just the kids that are significantly behind their grade level, it's everybody's getting a skill
We're getting, we're getting better, better at doing that with everyone, because now we have the information. Before, we would say they were at a guided reading level. Now we have some information. So a teacher at her table, not just her at-risk kids, but all of her kids. She, she might be pulling kids who are reading here and here and here, but they all have a phonics hole, and she's doing a small group with some skill-based intervention just on that, and then sends them back off to apply that at the reading level they're currently at. So we're, we're building that process and, and support with our teachers so that they understand the difference of how to do both.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're just going to wrap this up. We want to share just a little bit on briefly what we share with parents with regard to some of the most important research related to mandatory retention, and then some final slides.
Okay. So this slide, this last slide that we stopped at, I broke it up into four different slides just so that parents walk through that same one, two, three, four. So that's a part of the presentation. And then, we do really kind of hit on the retention piece that John Hattie's research says, there are a lot of things that we do that impact student learning in a positive way. There are a few things that impacted in a negative way, and this is a visual of that, and retention is one of those things. And so we just want parents to know that at eight years old, we don't believe that this is the right thing for kids to do. And then, we, we did add a slide in this fall that in case the retention piece was repealed, we're still going to continue to plan to help students grow who are below in, in, in reading. So our plan is still the same. So if they are identified, we'll be taking advantage of every good cause exemption. Again, we're saying we don't believe repeating third grade is the best response. We do believe that they need to be provided additional supports over and above what they received in third grade. We will be offering a summer learning opportunity that will be focusing on reading along with math, STEAM, and PE. And then we will recommend strategies and activities for parents to use with their Again, if they are in fourth grade, we'll be matching students with a teacher who has a strength in reading instruction. Again, we'll increase the time and intensity of the interventions they would receive, and we'll continue to collaborate with parents. And then it just ends at, we look forward to working together with our parents to help their students achieve their full potential.
So just to, to reiterate what's in your packet, when you have a moment, this information in the other packet is what was sent home via email with the child, with every elementary student's latest literacy proficiency report. They all received that last week via email. They also received an attachment with the read by grade three flyer, all parents, not just parents of third grade students. And then the FAQ, which talks about the bill that has been introduced by Senator Dana Polhanke, which we support, which maintains the, the other portions of the legislation that we believe will help increase the reading proficiency of students, but it removes the mandatory retention piece. And then it goes on to be very clear on LPS's position with regard to this legislation and what our intentions are on behalf of the students that we serve. So we're hoping parents have a clear picture of this, but are always welcome to contact their child's teacher, principal, Mrs. O'Brien, or myself.
Mrs. Bradford?
And this presentation has already been given to?
Anytime from the end of January to the beginning of March at their, their next PTA meeting.
Yes.
We had a couple of schools who didn't have one in February
Oh, yes.
for whatever reason, so.
I think it's due to Founder's Day.
Maybe.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bradford?
Um, I just want to commend you, because this is fabulous, what you've put out. I think it sends a clear message to our parents as to what the district stance is and what you're doing to be proactive. Again, I think it's, it's really great. It's clear, it's easily readable, it's understandable, and I think this is, the, the report is great, it's clear, it's concise, it's, again, it's understandable for parents to Again, it's understandable for parents to know what to expect. So thank you for doing that, because I know this hasn't been just for this year. Like Kalina said, you, we have been preparing for this. We've known that this has been coming. And I think the prep work and everything is really great. So, good job.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
And since you're in the hot seat, perhaps you'll talk us about the Accelerated Humanities textbook recommendation.
Thank you, and I will be very quick. And in fact, I'll be very quick because I guess I left the quote off the back of this recommendation. So I will put that in your board packet this week. But typically, I would bring a textbook recommendation to you. This textbook recommendation is for Accelerated Humanities, which is a course that currently is just at Churchill High School. Accelerated Humanities is a two-hour block. It's co-taught with an ELA teacher and a social studies teacher, and our social studies book was quite old. And so Mrs. Eddy and Mrs. Finkel worked together to review six different textbooks to come up with a new textbook. And they followed the same textbook adoption process we would. Mrs. Eddy tried two of them with her students and has brought this recommendation to you for the Western Civilization 2020 edition. And the quote is for $5,600. So it's not something that needs to be approved because of the amount of money. I just wanted to make sure, thinking about Wayne County Enhancement Millage and the things we've done, that I'm making you aware of this. But I neglected to bring the quote today. So I have the recommendation from Mrs. Finkel, and I will send you the quote in this week's board packet. But I just wanted to share with you that this is one of the courses that we have found new materials. And one of the things that we did is I had Mrs. Finkel share it with the two other high schools to make sure that if that's something they were to possibly look at offering Accelerated Humanities, that they were aware of what materials we were adopting.
Are there any questions for Mrs. O'Brien? Thank you very much. President Johnson, that concludes the curriculum committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That'll move us on to item five, Building and Site Committee, and I will turn it over to the able hands of Mr. Centers.
Thank you. All right, we have three items this evening. We'll start with item A, which is K-4 lunch tables, paid for out of the 2013 bond. And Mr. Francis will be our presenter this evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So the K-4 lunch tables, we are proposing to replace all of the K-4 lunch tables across, and calling them K-4 is a better description for folks, because they can think of the building they're in. But it goes beyond just our K-4 buildings. So there's actually 13 buildings in totality. That would be all of our traditional K-4s, plus Garfield, which is a former K-4, as well as Nigirro and Webster. So there's 13 of those all together. In your packet, you saw the individual breakdown between buildings and plus the shipping and installation. And on top of that, just a quick note about the installation, is it's not quite as simple because the tables that we currently have, as an average, you can call it 15 years, they're basically done in the 2000s, you know, over stages. And the newer tables have a bit of a trick. I was reading the email from the manufacturer, who is basically explaining, unless you have somebody that knows exactly what they're doing, we have to sort of saw off a portion to get the new tables put in. So you really want the professional installation and because our table, other tables are older. Now, we're not talking about the entire wall, but just for those at home, the lunch tables we have in these buildings are the ones that inlay into the wall, and then we have the special locks on them for protection so that a table doesn't just drop accidentally. But you would open that up and pull the table out. And over the years, the hinges and some of the parts that are constantly up, down, up, down, and folding up have gone awry, and we've had to at times go in and weld some of these, et cetera. So when we started talking about any particular purchases from some of the bond savings that we have basically accumulated or saved over the years, this was one of the items that the maintenance department had talked about. And talking to Mrs. Oquist about the plan, we had basically decided, let's just go ahead and do them all at one time instead of piecemeal all the time, knowing that we have the funds in the bond right now to be able to replace them all. So that's just sort of in a nutshell where we're at. I know we talked more at the study session last week about this as well, but wanted to give the folks at home a quick note on it as well.
Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you. Since we are not completely changing out these tables, we're just putting the new tables in, and you're talking about sawing and different things that they're doing, does this come with any warranty? I mean, because they're installing, is there any type of a?
Manufacturer's warranty.
Yeah, something because?
That's why professional installation, we think, is important as well.
Okay, okay.
And I don't want to make it sound like we're doing a brain procedure in there.
No, I didn't think that. I didn't think that, but I was just thinking, since we aren't doing the whole complete installing of them, will it come with some type of a?
I just want to make sure we're clear. We are doing a complete install. We're not pulling the old well out and changing the well. We're changing the table, though.
Right.
And that's part of why we want the professional installation.
Right, but the well still stays in there. So I guess my question is, is there, since they are switching it out, is there a warranty or no?
We'll have a standard warranty on table.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Phil, I noticed that four of the schools are significantly higher than the others. Is that because there are more tables? What would cause them to be higher? I'm looking particularly at Hoover, Kennedy, Nietzsche, and Randolph.
I think those are the ones that actually need the more difficult installation from my discussions with Mr. Lau.
Okay. So that's more of a labor cost?
Actually, let me check something real quick for you. The number, I can tell you the number differences. So hold on. I have these in alpha. And we had said, like, as one example was, like Hoover has more tables. So actually, I'm going through, I gave you a quick breakdown of them, but we do have the installation on a separate bill. So it is actually the number. As an example, Hoover has 20, whereas a lot of the other ones have like 12.
Okay. So it's just the?
It's the number.
It's the number of tables. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. It's, we'll be on regular?
Request that to be on regular, please.
Right. All right. Well, the next item is item B, RTA Roofing Design and Construction Services.
The roofing design and construction services for RTA is an item that the board is familiar with. RTA, going back a couple of years now, was the company that had done a very thorough investigation and then report on our roofs. They've also, for the past couple of summers, been engaged in both the design and then the construction services, meaning that they're reviewing the work on the roofs over the summer when we did Holmes into Johnson. And then last year, brought to the board to reengage RTA to do both the summer of 2020 and the summer of 2021, design and construction services. So that was already approved by the board for, again, this upcoming summer, as well as wanting to get it all sort of tucked away for two years in a row. Well, after having the finalization of our 10-year plan with what we've been calling the big three, the roofs, the boilers, and the parking lots, we have a, in the plan for the summer of 2021, we originally were just having the two Randolph and Riley as being designed and then re-roofed in the summer of 21. The finalization of the 10-year plan brought in for 2021 an addition of haze. Just the way that the money and the timeline laid out, we were able to bring that forward a year in the overall plan. So we went back, and the number for this, the 23444, would have simply have been on last year's proposal that the board had already agreed to with RTA. This is not a change in percentage. It's not a change in fees or structure or anything. It is simply Levonia Public Schools saying, look, we've already engaged you for the two roofs for the summer of 2021. We'd like to add one more right now, well in advance. So they can just sort of work on all three of them for us, and we can stay on our proposed timeline.
Any questions?
Questions on that? This one, if, based upon our conversation at the study session last week, this was something that we were going to discuss together, but Mrs. Oquist or myself could do the change order. It would not be something that the board would have to vote on unless you so chose to do so.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we can do the change order. Again, there's no true difference other than the addition of having them work on haze.
That's fine.
Great. All right, that moves us to item C, District Network Fiber Project. Again, this is 2013 bonds.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mr. Tim Clan, Administrator of Instructional and Informational Technology for the district, to come join me. And what we have here, and I'm just kind of scrolling through these items to get up to this particular one, we've discussed for a little while now about the fiber project. It's become a bit mythical at this point, because we've brought it up multiple times. But here we are now, discussing it with bid results, et cetera. The fiber project is the, basically, the network that we have that runs throughout the district, on poles, through people's backyards, and literally around the physical geographic location of the district, connecting this building to all of our other buildings, all of our schools. Okay? And I'll let Tim talk a little bit in more detail, but I just want to give sort of a high overview for the board, as well as anybody who's listening at home. But essentially, and I'm going to say a U, and it's not a perfect U, there's a little offshoots, et cetera. But essentially, if you can imagine Churchill in the southwestern portion of our district being one start point, and then moving north, moving east, and moving back south again to Franklin, that's where our current fiber, which is about 20 years old?
Coming up on it, yeah.
How it exists. Okay? That's, that is the way our current fiber for the last couple decades has run. Now, if you were to have a cut in that line somewhere along the path, anything that is between the cut and the end of the run, whether we're talking about the one part of the U that is Franklin, or the one part of the U that is Churchill, anything between the cut and the end is now offline. Okay? So the original proposal for bond dollars was to close that loop between Churchill and Franklin. So if we're to kind of square that circle, so to speak, if there was a cut somewhere, the fiber would be actually a continual fiber connection going in both directions. So information would simply move in the other direction, and those other items wouldn't, those other buildings would not be down. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So that's in a very simple manner, what we want to do and what was originally proposed with bond dollars, was to essentially close the loop, give it a redundancy. So if something happens in one area, information simply travels the other direction until we can get that repaired. Now, we had two things occur. One, very good IT savings, specifically during the bond, okay? And two, we did have overall general savings, but we also, going with IT's budget, we looked at the $400,000 and said, that's what we had set aside to kind of finish that loop. But with the savings, and after bidding and getting even better pricing than originally thought, we came to the conclusion, actually before we bid it, the conversation was, you're going to get better pricing than what we thought it was going to be four or five years ago. We have the money in the tech budget of the bond to do more than just close the loop. We can actually change the entire fiber. Again, it's coming up on 20 years. It is older, and we've had problems with scrolls and different, you know, items making it go down. So essentially, we want to not only close the loop, but replace in its entirety the fiber network with an armored cable. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so I did the simple?
That's perfect.
Well, okay. Thanks for your comment.
You could have stayed home.
I do want to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about armored fiber and any of the little one-offs that I may not have, just trying to simplify what we're doing.
Yeah, and if anybody's seen the map we have of the actual fiber, there's, I think, just about 28 miles of private fiber throughout the district. That includes not only the main loop that goes around to the U at this point that goes through the district, but what we also call the last mile. So that fiber, the main fiber, travels on primarily main roads or areas that are, where the poles are common. Then we have the last mile, which is those stretches that go out to the individual buildings. So in several cases, we try to make the majority of the fiber, the main fiber, run right past, like, the high schools, central office, some of the middle schools, but a lot of the elementaries that are back in the subdivisions and things like that are coming, are kind of offshoots off of that. So that's where we tend to see that. And the areas where that fiber runs through people's backyards is where we have tended to see the squirrel chews. Plus the fact that with it being close to 20 years old, although we've done a lot of maintenance and tried to maintain it, some of the places where we have squirrel guard on, it's come off, or some of the lashing has come off and the wires hung down. We've had garbage trucks hit it and take it down in certain areas. So it's due, even with all the maintenance, it's due to have the replacement. And the estimated life, back when it was put in, was around 20 years. The estimated life on the new fiber, they've upped it to 30 years. So that'll help us get a little more longevity out of it. Plus, we're also increasing the fiber count in that loop to accommodate the both direction of service, plus to give us some additional, what we call dark fiber. So some fiber that we can switch over to if there's an outage somewhere, we can light up some of the dark fiber. So. But the armored cable is exactly that. It's designed to prevent squirrels from chewing through it. That's what most districts and most places are going to now. So, because it does seem to be a very common occurrence nowadays, so.
Questions, comments?
Yeah. And so that's the overview of what we're planning to do. Now, specifically with the bid information that you have, I just want to make sure that we're talking through it. We have AMCOM as the low bidder. We bid it in, essentially, there's three sections. It was the close the loop, then it was the redo all the rest of it, that's 20 years old, and then there was, what if we just bought fiber? Those were sort of the three. And we've been looking at that third one as more of an alternate. If it can save us money, if it's better for the district, if that makes the most sense, then we could accept that, save dollars, and procure the material, the fiber ourselves. What we ended up, after more discussion and more research, was learning that while it might save a few dollars to procure it ourselves, we are in turn having to receive it. And when we receive these giant spools, anything that could potentially happen to it is our liability. We also weren't 100% sure how we'd be getting these giant spools off the truck, onto the ground, into the warehouse, and then to have the company come and use them. If they show up and there's anything wrong with it, it's on us. So it made a heck of a lot more sense for AMCOM to procure the cable, the fiber, take full responsibility for it from beginning to end. And if anything goes wrong with it in transit, et cetera, exactly. And they'd say, believe me, when it leaves and starts traveling, something happens to it. So Barton Mallow is also our owner's representative in technology. They talked through it with us as well and said, it's not worth, you know, taking on the responsibility of it. So we chose to strictly go with the low bidder, which happens to be AMCOM, for both the closing of the redundancy and doing the redundancy, as well as the new armored cable.
All right. Questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Looking at the bid, it looks like AMCOM was the low bidder on two of the three packages, but overall, it looks like maybe they were completely the low bid. Was there? Was there any thought about, because they were low bid on package one and two, to split and for the procurement, go with a different bidder?
That was the discussion, and if we split it, we would save, I will tell you the dollar amount, it's about $16,000 if we procured it ourselves. For the $16,000, we all looked at each other and said, how are we getting it off the truck? And what happens if an entire spool is bad?
You're physically fit.
So talking it through with Barton Mallow a little more, they said, that is not, yeah, it's not worth it because one thing goes wrong and you've lost any savings that you've had. AMCOM is the one now that's going to be responsible from beginning to end.
And they have the right equipment to do it.
Right, right.
The other question I have, is the old fiber coming out?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a process and that they'll work with us on because essentially, we have to hang it in sections, and they'll actually hang the new fiber loosely, and then when they get it connected at both ends and they actually make the cut over, they'll come back and unlash the old fiber and pull it out and relash, final relash, the new fiber up onto the pole. So it's done piece by piece.
It's a relatively lengthy process time-wise. This won't be done right away. This could be 16, 18-month process to have it all done, because they're literally going up poles and, well, more than that. We would estimate somewhere between 35 and 40 miles because of the, we're adding, we're adding some of the last miles as well as having enough slack to be able to drop it and bring it back up.
And we, yeah, we have to try to incorporate service loops essentially, and especially near major crossroads and things like that where they double back on it a couple of times so that if there is damage to the fiber, they have somewhere to go back and pull some extra when they have to cut out the bad section and do that. So every so often, they build in loops up on the pole so that they have some spare to work with, because you don't want to come back after the fact. And it's one continuous loop of fiber essentially where they split off. You might have 288 pieces of fiber running through, they'll take 12 off to the school and it keeps going, and they'll take 12 off to the school. And so each time there's a cut or a break or whatever, they have to reconnect all the ends, you know, one by one and test them again and make sure that they're good. So it's always good to have some spare up on the poles to work with, yes.
Just a question, you said we've had this for 20 years. I'm thinking of technology, prior to that, did we, we had a system in place for fiber?
Most likely, and I wasn't here at that time, but most likely, we probably had individual circuits through the phone company, through AT&amp;T to each building, coming from Wayne Risa.
When we initially put in the fiber, that was brand spanking new technology, I would say.
It's my understanding that we were an earlier doctor as a district. Yeah.
Another question.
Mr. Johnson?
Is there any value to us in the old cable?
Not that I'm aware of, and probably not the condition that it's in, but we can certainly inquire about.
Can cut you off a foot or two.
We can cut you off a piece, yeah.
Make a little pile of it and let him go ahead in the backyard.
Any other questions? We'd like to have that on the regular, please.
I just want to give everyone the visual of like Bill Murray in Caddyshack with the round hogs, you with the squirrels and the fiber cable, yeah.
I will say that when they attack our fiber, it's really bad for us. When they attack our electrical lines, it's a lot worse for the squirrel.
Yeah, yeah.
Never mind, was telling me she was so frustrated that her, that the squirrels got at her cable line.
Yeah.
We feel your pain over here, it's ridiculous, what a squirrel can do.
That's what the emergency repair budget I spoke about earlier is for.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Johnson, that concludes Billian's side.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. That'll take.
Okay, while we're still on that, before we conclude and while Phil's still here, I just wanted to look back to the RTA roofing and make sure I understood correctly because it may need to be added to next week's agenda. I pulled up the RTA Board Resolution that was approved last April, and in the resolution, we specifically list out the buildings. So for audit trail purposes, it would be, we would want to get that documentation that this building is being added, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. So you'll be happy to know, I'm always listening. When we're spending money, my ears always pop up.
Excellent, no doubt.
Thank you, Ms. M.
Thank you.
So that will be then on.
Regular agenda.
Way to catch that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then that will take us to item six, our Policy Committee, and I'll turn it over to Vice President Burton.
Thank you. We have a number of board bylaws that need revision. The list looks lengthy, but we should be able to clip through these very quickly because they are very minor, the bylaws are very, very minor in their verbiage changes. It's just polishing things up, making sure that they're up to date and that they are in fact in step with our current practices. Mrs. Oakwist, do you want to go through these? Would you prefer that I go through them?
I'd be happy to. I think we can move rather quickly.
Go right ahead.
So as you know, Vice President Burton and I already spent a number of hours going through these. We also shared them with the board last week at our study session. So we will briefly go through the bylaws. If you have any questions or recommended changes, please let us know. We'll start with bylaw BBBC. The only change in that is in the first sentence, we, instead of saying that the board may pay reimbursement in expenses of the board, it's actually the district. So we changed the word board to district, and then we clarified that in that we're referring to board members incurring those expenses.
Everyone okay with that?
Good.
Terrific.
I should say that each of these have been reviewed for the Michigan Compiled Law. Any legal references, any cross-references, and where needed with the legal counsel for MASB. We're on bylaw BBBE. We removed the subtitle. As Mrs. Burton and I reviewed these bylaws, we determined that if the subtitle really did not add value, we would remove that for consistency's sake. And then on item C, we referred to individual committee meetings because that is the process by which the board is compensated for the meeting. That is how it takes place currently. That is the process the district has used for many years. So we wanted to clarify that to say all individual committee meetings instead of just committee meetings.
Any other questions?
Bylaw BBC, again, the subtitle has been removed. This has to do with board committees, and as you know, we have those committees listed and they function, and we rotate through those at each study session and committee meeting as well as our voting meetings. This indicates that board members that serve on committees shall function as liaisons between the Board of Education and District Administration. It previously said the staff, which could certainly mean one and the same, but those committees work primarily with administrators at the district level. In the final sentence, I'll reread how it is currently stated and then question whether or not it is really necessary to include this sentence. The final sentence says, "Per audience communication policy, opportunity will be provided for interested parties to address a committee." As you know, we have a board policy that's very clear on audience communication, the process by which a community member is welcome to give feedback on the item of any committee or anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. Therefore, our question was whether or not that was a necessary addition or even appropriate within that policy.
Just looking at it, it doesn't, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It doesn't look, it's sort of out of place for one, and it's redundant of our other policy on audience communication. My feeling is it's, we don't need it there.
I feel the same way. It just kind of sticks out there and nowhere. I don't think we really need it in there. We already know audience communication is part of committee of the whole.
Right, part of any meeting.
Yeah, any meeting, so I don't think we need it.
Okay, Mrs. Bonfield?
Yeah, that was the, I was gonna, it's part of Open Meetings Act, correct?
Yes, it is.
So it's, it's already.
Yep. I'm fine with that. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Because we have our agendas available online and there's an audience communication section already on the agenda, this seems unneeded.
I plan to remove that.
Okay, sounds good.
Bylaw BBD, Board Superintendent Relations. We added the word recognizes in the first sentence. The Board of Education recognizes that legislation and adoption of policies is an important function of a school board and that the execution of the policies is a function of the administration and staff, as opposed to saying should be. We stated that in a clearer, more direct fashion. The second paragraph, we felt really was not indicative of the overall scope of the board's work. It simply said it would free the board to devote time to policymaking and appraisal functions. And so certainly, the board is responsible, as the board president for many years has identified what those responsibilities are. So we state the time to, devote the time to three main functions of the board, and this wording comes directly from the MASB Guide for Board of Education Members. Goal setting, the board's vision for the district, including the approval and adoption of the budget. Number two, establishing policy for the district and sharing in policy development. And designating the chief executive officer, in parentheses, recruiting, hiring, and evaluating the superintendent. So we felt that that was much more descriptive than policymaking and appraisal functions.
Any questions or comments on this one? Mrs. Bonfield?
So our three, it lists our three main functions, and maybe I'm missing something along the way, but it says delegation by the board of its executive powers to the superintendent. Are we really delegating our powers to the superintendent? Doesn't the board have its powers and the superintendent has her powers and we?
Its executive powers.
Oh, no, no, no. And so we hire the superintendent, and maybe you've read more on the policy, it just, to me, it seems kind of out of place that we are delegating executive powers to the superintendent. Mrs. Jarvis has a.
I think the key in there is executive, and it's not executive as in leader, it's executive as in the execution of. So the powers that we are deferring over to the superintendent are the ability to execute the policy that we've created.
Would you feel more comfortable if you got rid of its?
I think that might take care of part of the problem.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's not, those are, I mean, there are some things that fall under our realm and some that are the superintendent's.
Yeah. It's just delegation by the board even of executive powers or.
Of executive powers to the superintendent.
But do we really delegate executive powers to the superintendent? Isn't that the way it's set up?
I think that's the whole point of this. I mean, like, this being a bylaw defines how the board's going to operate within itself. So therefore, this, I think this is stating that we are going to delegate everything else, all the other executive functions of the district to the superintendent so that we can spend our time doing our three areas. Everything else is going to fall under the superintendent.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I just don't, I just don't like how that reads at all.
How it's phrased.
And it frees the board to devote its time. I don't think that we're, I don't feel like we give over any kind of powers, executive or, you know, to otherwise, so that it frees up our time. I mean, there's not anything that makes it sound like we're sloughing off some of our duties. And it just, I mean, we do everything that we're supposed to do, and I have never felt like we, I mean, so we do delegate some of the stuff to the superintendent and some of our, and maybe that's where it comes in, you know, where we do our motions and then we say, and, you know, the superintendent and/or her delegate can execute the contract.
Well, we're going into a first reading and then a second reading. I understand where you're coming from and I can see your point, that it's just, it's, the first half of that sentence is just written a little bit more clumsily than we would like. Unless someone has a suggestion.
Well, I was going to say, could we just say something about the superintendent's job or is to manage the schools within the board's policies and the board's job is to devote its time to these three main functions? Like, just kind of.
Make it more succinct.
Yeah, just, just so, and then you don't have to say all about the delegate and the execution, you could just say.
And the time, and da-da-da-da.
The superintendent's position or however you want to word it.
Right.
And then that the board has three main functions, just so that they know that.
Yes, which is the function of it.
You could say something like delegation by the board of the executive function of the superintendent to manage the schools within the board policies or something like that, as opposed to saying its executive powers, but rather refer to the executive function of managing the schools within the board policies. And so we can certainly look at that. What I'd like to do is refer back to the MASB Guide as well to see how that is worded in there, because that's, what we found was the majority of the bylaws in this particular realm oftentimes came directly from that guide that we utilize in our training.
President Johnson and then Mrs. Bradford.
Question, Mrs. Oakwist, you said that the language in the middle paragraph in red comes directly from MASB. Does it actually say the three main functions of the board?
The functions themselves are the part that came directly from there. The goal setting, the establishing policy and designating the chief executive officer.
Okay, do we as a board have any other functions other than the three listed?
Yep, attending school events and.
Responding to community.
Yeah, these are the main functions.
Representing Levonia Public Schools at Wayne Risa, voting things. I mean, we have other very.
Those are outside.
Absolutely.
Sort of things, but as it relates to the district itself, we only have these three functions. And then, as it says in the first paragraph, that the execution of the policies is the function of the administration and staff. So I think, I think what we're trying to convey in that second paragraph is that, is to follow along what we say in the first paragraph, that the function, it's the execution of those policies by the administration. So we're not delegating that to the superintendent, it's already.
Which is what Mrs. Bonfield was saying.
Maybe.
It's really not a delegation because they weren't ours to begin with.
I would agree with that.
I'm sorry, would you ever think to do, put the three main functions on the top of the board and what the superintendent's job is, and then state, "The Board of Education recognizes that the legislation and adoptions is an important function."
Why don't we do this? This needs more massage.
Yeah.
I suggest that we pull this one right now, take a look at what MASB says, clean it up, because I think we all have the same tone that we want, and it's just, it needs a rewrite, and then we'll bring it back. If we can get that brought back for a first reading next week or next meeting, then we'll do so. If not, we'll take a little bit more time. But I think we could probably refer back to the MASB Guide. Mrs. Oakwist, you and I can take a look at this and we'll bring it back, but in a different format. We're still at a first reading stage, so we'll go from there.
I think what we could do too is bring it, pull it from the voting agenda and bring it to the March 2nd study session.
Sure, and then redo.
So you can take a look as well, if we don't think we'll be ready by then.
Yep, that sounds fine. Mrs. Jarvis, did you have anything else to add?
I just wanted to throw one thing out about this. Originally, the first paragraph said that the execution of the policies should be the function of the administration and the staff. I suspect that the entire second paragraph explained and supported why it should be. If we're taking the should be out and making it is, it's likely that that second paragraph, or at least the first half of it, is no longer necessary because it's not supporting or defending why it should be.
So we will, we'll take a, we'll do a rewrite of this one. I think we're all in agreement, what it should say, it just doesn't say it the way we'd like it to say. Yeah. All right, we'll go on to BBE. So BBD may or may not be going up for a first reading.
I pulled it down for a reason.
Okay, B B E.
All right, this is in response to the board attorney. We added one line at the end of the very short bylaw that states contact with the attorney or attorneys shall be made by the board president or the superintendent. This is with regard to communications with the board's attorney.
That kind of goes without saying, but just to protect ourselves in any situation. Any questions or comments? Okay.
All righty, we have B B F, which we're recommending for removal. This is Board Operations Advisory Committees to the Board. As Vice President Burton and I read through this, we really, and both of us have spent a good deal of time in the district, could not recall a time when there was a board-appointed advisory committee as, as functioning as it's listed here. Where the board is actually determining the function of the committee, how long it would exist, the reports that it would receive, who would be on that. And we really felt that that is generally a function of the district. We do have at times, as evidenced by our last meeting, where the board appointed the, or approved the creation of a committee. But even with that, did not define who would be on the committee, how it would function, et cetera. So as we looked at this, we really did not feel that either one of those were current practice or actually even past practice. And so our recommendation would be that we remove this policy. Any questions or feedback?
I agree.
Okay, all right. B B H.
All righty, this is with regard to awards, recognitions, and certificates by the board. I'll just read it since it's one line. The Board of Education may recognize individuals or groups by resolution or other means for outstanding contributions or other occasions as designated by the board and/or the superintendent. So sometimes we do a certificate, sometimes it's a resolution, sometimes it's a presentation. We just thought that that better encompassed all of the ways that we seek to recognize folks in our district.
Everyone okay with that?
Works for me.
Okay, B C.
Bylaw B C, in the, the second paragraph, we're adding the word regular to indicate which board meeting. Because we obviously have a few different kinds of board meetings, so that would be a regular voting meeting. The third paragraph is really not a practice that, that currently exists as such. Certainly, we have, all of our agendas are always available and is, is, they're required to be for our voting meetings. Those are up on Board Book and online. And with regard to being placed on a mailing list and sending the agendas in advance, et cetera. That, for the most part, predated the opportunity for people to access the information in the way that they do. We actually have full access to all information, not only by the day of the meeting, but well in advance of our meetings. And so we felt that that really, that paragraph is no longer applicable. And then we added that, to just to clarify, the opportunity for students, for citizens to address the board at its meetings. We added, shall be provided through audience communication, because that is the venue. And then agendas for all board meetings shall be available on the school district's website, which is our current practice. The minutes of all voting meetings are also available on the district's website, following their approval by the board.
Everyone all right with that?
And those are all in accordance with public participat- participation in meetings.
All righty.
B C C, B C A A, this is the annual organizational meeting. And so this refers to the meeting in July, which takes place to determine the, the regular meeting schedule for the year. And it's, no longer includes the election of officers, which now takes place in January. So we thought we would clarify that. So people, if they were reading this and they, they were curious as to why it said, with the exception of electing officers, that we clarified that that takes place in January. And then previously, it said the secretary shall post at the main office. So just to clarify that we are not speaking about the board secretary, we put in the title of Executive Assistant for the Board of Education, shall post the meeting minutes. And then, again, it says such notice shall include the name, address, and telephone of the board office and the date, time, and location of meetings.
We all okay with that?
Very good.
All righty, B C A B.
All righty, moving right along, this refers to our regular meetings. And so we did spend some time taking a look at this policy. And then we followed up with M A S B a couple of times to clarify that when we set the meeting schedule, as you know, once we set the date and the time of the meeting, those cannot be changed without a vote of the Board of Education. We can change other, other types of meetings, but not the regular voting meetings that are determined during the organizational meeting without a vote of the full Board of Education. You can, however, change the location of the meeting without a vote of the Board of Education. So therefore, we've limited the, the change in that to just date or time and that where it needs to be posted. And then added the line that said, should there be a location change for a regular meeting, notice will be made to the community. I'll give you an example of this. If, for instance, there is a topic, and we've seen this in, in other districts, where a, maybe a significant item was going to be on the agenda that may incur a great deal of potential audience participation or that might be of great interest to the community. This is a relatively limited-sized room. So if we decided, well, it would be more appropriate and better suit our community to have it held at a high school. We have the means by which social media, website, email blasts, et cetera, where we can notify people clearly where that meeting location can be changed. And that would make it less cumbersome to have to require a, a board vote in order to do that. And so I certainly know that in neighboring districts, they have done that, where they've had to move to a high school for a meeting on relatively short notice. And so we thought that it would be wise to have our bylaw reflect the ability of a district to do that.
Everyone all right with that? President Johnson.
Should, should we include, in order to, should, should there be a change in location noticeably made to the community? Should we put a timeframe in? You know, for, for the regular, uh, meeting, we have to have eighteen, eighteen hours. But it would seem this leaves it sort of open-ended that we could change the location, like literally five minutes before.
What, by law, we don't have to have a timeframe associated with it. So I don't want to restrict ourselves, we don't have to. I would be okay with putting something along the lines of as soon as possible or in a timely manner. Granted, that's a little bit ambiguous, but it's ambiguous on purpose.
I mean, if there's an emergency and something has happened within the district and we need to really change a location quickly, that I think you'd have to do it, like you said, in a timely manner. But I don't think you should put a timeline on it. It could happen like the day of. There could be a, some type of.
A flood in a power outage.
I don't know, something.
It could be a power outage five minutes before the meeting's scheduled.
As long as everybody else is comfortable with it, I, I can live with it.
Or we could put, notice will be made to the community as soon as possible.
Yeah, one of those clauses you hope you never need.
Exactly, I hope we, we never have to have that. What everybody else is comfortable with, I'm fine.
Absolutely. When we put as soon as possible, yep. Okay. And then the only, switching from bylaws to policy. Mrs. Oakley, I'm going to let you take this policy, E B B C B, which is security in schools. And this is in response to the recent legislation allowing boards of education to, to pass policy regarding firearms or other weapons on their, on their premises.
Yes, what this policy seeks to do, based on the, the will of the Board of Education, the recommendation of a district administration, is to really close that loophole that currently exists in the law. And to provide clarity, both to community, our community, our parents, as well as law enforcement and our district administration. And so the board has studied this policy at various times over the course of the past year. We have also discussed this at prior meetings. And this is a new policy that clearly prohibits firearms and other weapons to be on district premises and at district-related functions. It clearly states the exceptions for that are the following. Can be made for persons with written approval from the district's current superintendent, weapons in the possession and under the control of law enforcement, and weapons in the possession of L P S authorized security personnel. Additionally, a parent or legal guardian who is properly licensed, who is a properly licensed concealed weapon carrier, is not precluded from carrying a concealed pistol on school property while remaining in their vehicle as they drop off their student at school or pick up their student from school. Those would be the only exceptions. And this policy extends to all district premises and all district-related functions. So that would include the Board of Education office, all of our schools, parking lots, auxiliary sport fields and arenas, et cetera. So all district-related functions. Yes.
Quick question, on that, in that paragraph, you, you wrote, is not precluded from carrying a concealed pistol. You changed the wording to pistol. Should it say concealed wep, could we, should we say concealed weapon? Is there a reason we changed it to a concealed pistol?
Where?
Well, it says additionally, a parent or legal guardian, guardian who is a properly licensed concealed weapon carrier, is not precluded from carrying a concealed pistol on school property. Shouldn't that say concealed weapon again? Not, or would that not be?
Is that the way the law is stated?
We, we took it right off of the law. I, I understand where you're coming from in that regard, but we, we took that language specifically from the law. Because that is the, that's the change from being able to have an open and closed period in the pistol.
For those who could not hear, Mr. McDonald, he was not, not on a microphone, he was saying that that language is taken directly from the law as it pertains to the concealed weapons permit.
Okay, because it, I don't know, that just seems kind of odd to me that, I mean, it might not be.
I think it's because, what, we can go back and double check, but I think that it's because the permit is a permit for pistol.
Only a pistol.
Exactly, the permit that we're referring to here.
Wouldn't be a rifle.
Exactly.
Another gun or another rifle.
Or a knife or something.
Would still be not allowed. That, that, it, it refers to what the concealed license, license allows. As opposed to if it were a rifle or another type of gun, is that correct?
Correct, I was trying to look up exactly what the legal laws. It changes from, you may legally open carry a pistol, and then it changes it to a firearm depending on the situation. So even within the law, they go back and forth.
Okay.
It, it does change within the law itself between firearm and pistol.
Okay.
It has to do with when you are concealed carrying it, it refers then to the pistol as opposed to a firearm.
Okay, okay, just wondering.
No, it's a great question.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I didn't see anything in here that mentions buses as district premises. Do we want to make sure that this is clearly extended to not carrying weapons on buses?
Oh, sure. I know we had some dialogue about that, I'm trying to recall if we thought that that. I don't think this pertains only to adults.
Do we want to change that to district property, which would mean our physical land property, our buildings, or our buses, that's all our property?
We could say district premises.
Or property.
Vehicles. And a district-related.
Premises, I'm sorry, vehicles, Mrs. Oakley?
Other weapons on district premises, comma, district vehicles. And a district-related functions.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that might.
Is everyone all okay with that? All righty.
So we'll take a look at the third paragraph. And it, this is, it's important dialogue, because we want, we certainly want to make sure that we're abundantly clear and that we get this, get this right. District employees and students who violate this policy are subject to discipline, including permanent termination or expulsion. Others who violate this policy are subject to being banned from district premises and district-related functions. The superintendent or the superintendent's designee shall refer a person who knowingly violates this policy to law enforcement officials. The term weapon means any object which, in the manner in which it is used, is intended or represented to be used, is capable of inflicting bodily harm, property damage, or endangering the health and safety of any persons. Again, that language is, is a little clumsy, we worked with that a, a couple of different times. But again, that came out of established policy as well.
I think we've got one word change that we missed in here.
Okay.
Second line, should be represented to be used as capable of inflicting bodily harm, not is capable. Or is it?
Yeah, that's a standalone. So is intended or represented to be used.
Never mind, you're right.
Is capable of inflicted bodily harm, property damage, or.
Skip that, you're right, thank you. Other questions or thoughts? Mrs. Bonfield?
Sorry, I missed the opening on the paragraph before. So the last sentence of the third paragraph, the superintendent or superintendent's designee shall refer a person who knowingly violates. I know that we're getting really picky on this one, but.
No, we need to.
Does that preclude, if we say that only the super, is it, is it saying that only the superintendent can, uh, tell law enforcement? And when I read it, I'm like, oh, does, the principal can't say, you know, a teacher can't say? I know that's really getting.
No, that's okay, because our intent is in that case, they would be acting as, as a designee to be able to do that.
Okay, I got it.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Oh, like the principal would be the superintendent's designee?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, I'm good.
And in the next paragraph, we're going to talk about the responsibility of everyone to report.
Oh, good.
So.
Oh, sorry?
Keep going, no, that's okay. Mrs. Jarvis.
In the fourth paragraph, when we talk about the term weapon and we go in there, endangering the health and safety of any persons. I'm not keen on having that be plural, maybe person or persons. I don't want someone to say, well, I, I only wanted to shoot one person.
I'm fine with putting parentheses around the S, if you want to put person, persons.
We could definitely make that change.
Okay.
The next paragraph states staff members and students shall, oh, yes.
Hate to be nitpicky.
No, absolutely.
Where it says additionally, a parent or legal guardian. The actual statute says a parent or legal guardian of a student of the school.
Where, where are you reading?
He's reading the sta, the second paragraph.
Additionally, a parent or legal guardian.
Okay.
And the statute says a parent or legal guardian of a student of the school is not precluded.
Good.
I think it's a, I think it's a great addition.
Yep.
It narrows the, the scope.
Right.
Gotcha, if you have a kid anywhere.
Well, it does say dropping off their student, but I like that.
Mark, does it say properly licensed concealed weapon? Or does it, because in Michigan, it's a C P L, not a. C C W.
It actually says an individual licensed under this act to carry a concealed pistol.
Yeah, it doesn't really name the license.
Okay.
So we will add that wording after the word legal guardian? The phrase legal guardian?
Okay.
Would you like me to go on to the next paragraph?
Yes.
Staff members and students shall immediately report to administration any knowledge of dangerous weapons and/or threats of violence by students, staff members, or visitors to a school or to the district. Failure to report. Failure to report such information may subject the staff member to disciplinary action up to and including termination. At that point, we did not refer to students because there are, there is a student code of conduct and those are outlined in a separate Board policy. And then the note at the bottom simply states this policy does not prevent the appropriate use of starter pistols in sporting events.
Any question or comment on the last section? Okay. Thank you very, very much to all over the last five-plus years who have been working on this policy, including, I would like to thank Ann Arbor and Clio School Districts, who were the ones who took this through the entire court system on behalf of not only their district, but the districts in the entire state of Michigan. That was a very necessary, but a, a very financially expensive and politically difficult stand that they had to make for the benefit of the, of the safety of students in the entire state of Michigan. I would like to thank them. I would like to thank those in our previous administrator, administration over the last several years, as we've walked carefully through this to get us finally to today. And thank our legislators for finally giving us the right to, to do what we believe is, is right and safest for our district. Nothing is a guarantee, but this is one more tool that we have to keeping our students as safe and then our staff as safe as possible. Mrs. Bradford.
I just have a question. Do we know if other districts in our surrounding area have created policy already?
Many.
They have.
Because we referred to several of them when we were looking at ours. Many, many surrounding districts, yes.
Okay, so they've already created their policies and they already have them in place?
Yes.
Okay.
They do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonfield.
This is gonna be first reading.
Yes.
Listed as a first reading at our next meeting.
Correct, yes. All righty, that wraps up the policy. All set? President Johnson?
And then that takes us to item. Item seven, Personnel Committee.
Thank you.
Mrs. Frank is not here. Mrs. Oakley, anything?
We do not.
Thank you. That takes us to item eight, Legislative Committee.
Well, I just wanted to remind the Board that I sent quite a bit, quite a bit of information with regard to the Governor's Budget Proposal, which is certainly a favorable set of recommendations that reflect the tenants of the S F R C that we have been promoting for, for the past year and a half. And so we'll continue to follow that process closely. As I mentioned in my update, it's the first step of a, a multi-step process, but all indications are that the Legislature does have intent to have a budget prepared into the Governor by mid-June and prior to the start of the next fiscal year, which is certainly appropriate and appreciated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions? We're all set.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. And it looks like we are at the end of our agenda. And as long as there's no additional business, then we are concluded. Thank you.